Being six o'clock, I called September two thousand and twenty-three Town of Clayton Planning Board Meeting to order. For roll call, Board Members Dupree and Williams, no, Board Member Williams is present. Board Member Dupree has an excused absence. Will all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. Consider it a nation honor invisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next item, item number two is adjustments of the agenda. Are there any adjustments of the agenda? Hearing none, we move to item three, approval of the minutes from the August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three Clayton Planning Board Meeting. Are there, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Move to approve.
Had a motion to approve by Board Member Powers?
Second.
Second by Board Member Applewhite. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is item five, A, two thousand and twenty-two dash one nine five dash C Z M, Vincent Road Conditional Res zoning with master plan.
Good evening, Board. Today we have an applicant requesting the conditional zoning be changed to conditional zoning with residential. This property is located off of Vincent Road. It is approximately one hundred and forty-six acres. They're proposing up to four hundred and fifty-seven single-family detached and single-family attached units. Their proposed density, their stating is three point one-two units per acre. Just as a side note that this, these parcels are currently outside the town's jurisdiction and that there is a concurrent review and petition for annexation that has also been submitted to the town at this time. Before this could be approved in the future by town council should this go to them with your approval or recommendation, they would have to be annexed first prior to being accepted to the conditional zoning with a master plan. Here on the screen, we have a master plan layout of what they're proposing. You can see in the darker orange areas, we have single-family to the south there and the north more single-family with a large section of town homes there in the middle in blue. Some of the development data, as I said, detached, uh, single-family homes and attached single-family homes as well. The current uses around the area are residential. Like I said, this, these parcels are in Johnson County jurisdiction and they're currently zoned agricultural residential, which is low-density residential for the Johnson County zoning land use plan. They're proposing at the four hundred and fifty-seven units, two hundred and fifty as single-family detached and two hundred and seven family as attached town homes. They're proposing two access points off of Vincent Road to access the subdivision, including a third emergency access that would not be open unless there was an emergency needed. The water, there's water out there in public or from Johnson County and the applicant is proposing to connect to the Summerland pump station as well as provide and build a new infrastructure to, to be able to support the entire site with sewer. The electric provider is Duke Energy Progress. Here on the screen, we have the traffic generation numbers. They estimate the total trips around thirty-nine hundred and thirty-seven daily trips. That includes two hundred and seventy-nine AM peak trips and three sixty-two PM peak trips. We provided for you on the, on the side, uh, the typical subdivision standard comparison there. We have Johnson County's agricultural residential, Town of Clayton's residential estate, which is our least dense zoning district, which would be the most comparable. We also have R-ten, which would be a zoning district that allows town homes through a conditional zoning process. And then we have what the applicant is proposing under the proposed zoning district. You can see that there, as far as the minimum lot widths, they're proposing forty-eight for the single-family detached, twenty-one for the single-family attached town homes with a minimum lot size for six thousand square feet and four thousand square feet respectively. We went ahead and we provided you with the density per acre calculations of what's usually permitted, uh, units per acre here. In the AR, it's one point five units per acre, RE, the Town of Clayton's zoning district is one point seven, R-ten, five and ten. And then the proposed is split up into single-family detached and single-family attached. If you were only looking at the single-family detached homes, you'd be looking at a density of two units per acre. Were you looking at the portion of land dedicated to town homes, looking at a density closer to nine point six four units per acre? We have those setbacks listed there as well. Look over, have been provided to in your staff report. Uh, some of the development standards we'll list here. Stormwater, water, sewer, and electric project will comply with all Town of Clayton stormwater ordinances. Public water through Johnson County is available on Vincent Road. Existing sewer available access through Summerland pump station, adjacent to the development. And then, as I said, the development would have to provide some additional infrastructure improvements. Uh, electric is available from Duke. With all conditional zonings, a class C buffer is required with opaque screening around the perimeter of the development. Interior landscaping and tree yard trees would also have to meet the UDC's current requirements. Open space and amenities at least twenty-five percent, which in this case would be the thirty-six point five acres, is required. The applicant has provided fifty-eight acres, which is forty percent of the site, as resource conservation area and open space. Uh, there is no public greenways proposed as part of this development. However, the frontage widening will provide sidewalks on the side of the property that is being developed. Uh, there were no, uh, architectural elevations provided for this presentation from the applicant, so we'll just kind of list of what their architecture standards would be. All building materials shall include brick, wood, stone, fiber cement, and/or wood composite, composite. Vinyl siding shall be prohibited, but vital, vinyl accents such as windows shall be permitted. All residential units shall have a minimum of twenty-five percent masonry on the front facade. Single-family detached shall have either a crawl space foundation or a stem wall foundation or elevated raised slash raised foundation. Town homes shall have a slab on grade foundation. No more than consecutive, no more than two consecutive single-family detached homes shall contain the exact same front elevation with regards to materials or color palette. Single-family detached homes directly across the street from each other shall not have identical facades with regards to materials or color palette. No two consecutive town home buildings shall contain the same front elevations with regard to materials or color palette. Some of the conditional zoning criteria as laid out, consistency with adopted plans and policies of the town. As stated before, uh, these parcels are located outside the town's jurisdiction, including the ETJ and is currently under Johnson County's land use, um, as low-density residential. Low-density residential areas provide for a density of between one and three units per acre, which generally less than twenty-five percent of the area being used for single-family attached town homes. Proposed density does not meet the envisioned twenty forty-five growth plan and is consistent with the growth plan. Suitability of the subject property, current zoning permits low-density residential and is surrounded by other residential uses. The proposed zoning district permits low-density, single-family attached and detached developments. Applicant is proposing to connect to public water and sewers stated before. Improves the balance and meet specific needs of the town. The area, as is mentioned, is comprised of residential uses. The provision would be to add more, uh, more suburban-style, single-family detached homes while also offering, um, a higher density of single-family attached dwellings. As far as capacity and adequate public facilities and services, the schools, uh, proposed by this development is, uh, Powhatan Elementary, Riverwood, uh, Elementary High School, uh, sorry, Middle School and Clayton High. Clayton High and Riverwood Elementary, and there was a typo, should be Riverwood Elementary, are currently both on the cat list for the Johnson County school districts. Roads and developments will be accessed again, like we said, off Vincent Road. There will be open space, uh, open space provided by the development and there will also be, um, some state amenities will be talked to during the conditions. Water treatment is available, as we said, it would have to be connected through Summerland and developed elsewhere. For legal purposes, um, all town ordinances and procedures and approvals will be followed and the zoning is not contrived. Uh, they have to list the criteria for no adverse effects on joint property owners. Development will not match the density and unit type of surrounding developments. Improvements to existing public roads and network and connectivity to public utility extensions will mitigate impacts, but there will be impacts. Uh, next criteria is no one property owner or smaller will benefit to detriment of the public good. With the imposed conditions recommended later on, we believe that no detriment to the general public will exist. Uh, the master plan approval criteria is laid out here. It has to be in compliance with section one fifty-five, two oh three L and all other applicable requirements of this chapter or analysis or justification for deviations. It has to be consistent with the Clayton general design guidelines, must conform with proposal with stated purpose and requested. Is it a conditional zoning district request? Combatability of proposed development with adjacent community. Quality of design and ability of overall development plan to ensure a unified cohesive environment at a full build-out. Combatability relationships with each component of the overall project. The fiscal impact of the proposal, providing adequate bicycle and pedestrian links within development and with adjacent community. The effectiveness which proposal projects, protects and preserves ecological sensitive areas. Considerations for the planning board tonight. As you hear the, uh, recommended, uh, conditions of approval, keep in mind that the planning board shall make a recommendation to town council on the proposed project. Planning board shall include a written statement of consistency or inconsistency and reasonless statement along with a recommendation. Planning board may recommend conditions be added or removed. Applicant must agree to the changes in the conditions prior to council decision. Conditional zoning district and master plan narratives will be recorded with Johnson County if approved at a later date and that rezoning will run with the land. Following the approval, uh, electronic copy and master plan narrative and conditions shall be considered submitted to the planning department for final approval. Development shall meet all adopted town code ordinances. Town of Clayton engineering, stormwater, and design standards will be met. The North Carolina Fire Code and FPA fire standards, except for specifically modified by the approved master plan, will be met. The development shall not be, shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the master plan and master plan narrative as approved by the Clayton Town Council should they decide to approve this later on. Uh, number three of conditions of approval, I'm sorry, number four, all parcels subject to the conditional zoning and master plan shall be annexed into the town prior to any subsequent developmental approvals. Number five, the developer will be required to pay their proportional share to the Wilson Mills Fire District capital debt to the town prior to the effective date of the annexation. Number six of condition of approval, the following uses are permitted by right within the areas identified on the associated master plan. Single-family detached, single-family attached town home, park, fitness slash recreation center, and utility, a minor utility. The seventh condition, the development shall be limited to the following standards. The maximum number of total units is the four hundred and fifty-seven listed before. The maximum number of single-family town homes allowed would be two oh seven. The maximum number of single-family detached homes would be two hundred and fifty. And then maximum density would be two point, two, sorry, three point one-two dwelling units per acre. Some standards for each of the different types of unit. The minimum heated square foot space for detached, single-family home would be two thousand square feet. The minimum lot size, six thousand square feet. The maximum building height, thirty-five feet. Uh, front setback twenty, setback from the right of way to the face of the garage, twenty feet. Rear setback fifteen feet. Side setbacks to interior lot, six feet. Inside setback to corner lots would be ten feet for the detached, single-family lots. For the single-family attached town home lots, the dimensions are as follows. Heated square feet, minimum is one hundred, fifteen hundred square feet. The lot width minimum is twenty-one feet. The maximum building height would be forty-five feet. Front setback twenty-five feet. Rear setback fifteen feet. And the side interior lot setback would be six feet and the side setback for corner lots, ten feet. Number ten, condition of approval, all dimensional standards not otherwise modified through the conditions or the approved master plan narrative shall meet the applicable requirements within the town's UDC. Number eleven, the development shall have a minimum of fifteen-foot wide class C buffer around the entire perimeter development with a hundred percent opaque screening. Twelve, each single-family detached home shall have a minimum of a two-car garage. Thirteen, each single-family attached town home shall have a minimum of a one-car garage. Fourteen, the development shall include the community cabana or clubhouse and pool amenity area consisting of at least fifteen percent masonry materials on the front facade. Fifteen, in addition to the community cabana or clubhouse, have a minimum of the two of the following amenities, dog park, totter park, playground, multi-use fields, picnic gazebo, disc golf, pickleball court, community garden, tennis court, mini park, plaza, square, green space, and then private greenway and trails. As stated earlier, the following, uh, architectural structure standards shall be required to meet all single-family homes, both attached and detached. Again, that is the vinyl siding shall be prohibited except as accents. Twenty-five percent masonry on the front facade, um, and the single-family detached crawl space. No two consecutive, single-family homes detached or attached to have the exact same found front elevation with regard to materials or color palette. All units within the development shall include sustainable, high-efficiency products and appliances including low-e insulated windows, Energy Star dishwashers, low VOC paint and fiber cement siding. Number eighteen, in the dish conditions, development shall be consistent with three separate constructed access points in addition to two access points as shown on the approved master plan. A third entrance, as stated before, shall be constructed only to be used for emergency access on Vincent Road. The access requirements shall be determined by the appropriate town departments at the time of construction drawing review. The access points shall be gated and locked, always locked. Number nineteen, no more than thirty certificates of occupancy shall be issued within the development before the second required access point has been constructed. Twenty, no more than three hundred certificates of occupancy shall be issued within the development before the third required access point, the emergency access only is constructed. Number twenty-one, prior to approval, the construction drawings, the developer shall validate the adequate capacity of the downstream wastewater infrastructure, pump stations, and force main to accommodate the proposed flow. Twenty-two, any proposed wastewater infrastructure, pump station, force main, and/or gravity sewer required to serve this development shall be designed and constructed to serve the extent of the drainage basin able to be served by the such infrastructure. Twenty-three, a modified street section for the stream crossing noted on master plan sheet L-two shall be provided. Number twenty-four, the development shall dictate and construct the required improvements for Vincent Road along the property frontage equal to half the ultimate typical section for Vincent Road as listed in the transportation plan at the time of this approval. At minimum, the improvements will consist of roadway widening, curb and gutter, and sidewalk construction. Twenty-five, road improvements from the TIA prepared by Ramy Kemp Associates with NC dot approval to be constructed prior to the recording of the first final plat. The improvements that recommended at NC forty-two Glen Laurel Road coordinate with NC DOT to develop a signal modification plan allow for eastbound right, right turn lane overlap phase. Glen Laurel and Vincent Road provide an exclusive southbound left turn lane with at least five hundred feet of full width storage and appropriate deceleration and taper if right of way is available. Provide exclusive northbound left turn lane with at least two hundred and seventy-five feet full of width storage and appropriate decelerization and taper if right of way is available. Along Vincent Road and Windsor Green Drive, at Site Drive One, construct Site Drive One with one ingress and one egress, lane striped as shared left throughout, left through and right turn lane. Provide an exclusive eastbound turn lane with at least one hundred feet of width storage and appropriate deceleration and taper. Provide stop control for southbound approach, Site Drive One. Vincent Road and Rainwater Court, Site Drive Number Two, construct Site Drive Two with one ingress and one egress. Lane stripped and shared left through and right turn lane, provide an exclusive eastbound left turn lane with at least one hundred feet full of width storage and appropriate deceleration and taper. Provide stop controls for the southbound approach. Number twenty-six, and the final one, to the extent that a conflict between master plan and master plan narrative, in these conditions, the conditions are full control. Staff recommendation, the planning board should, we staff recommends the planning board should find the Vincent Road conditional zoning district inconsistent with the Unified Development Code and the twenty forty-five comprehensive growth plan, subject to the twenty-six conditions listed. We provided a statement, uh, statement of inconsistency and reasonless, should you agree with our recommendation and decide that this is inconsistent with the growth plan and the town's development plan.
Bruce, can you explain, um, staff found it inconsistent with the comprehensive land use plan based on the density that is called for in the surrounding neighborhood? What, what is the density that's recommended by the, the plan?
So the density, at least for the Town of Clayton, and if we were to look at it from that perspective, would be no more than three units per acre. The, uh, the agriculture residential for Johnson County is very similar to that. Um, we find that the single-family detached is consistent, but when we look at the, um, the town homes as they're developed on the site, we believe that, that, that is inconsistent with what's called for in the land use as far as density per acre goes.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you. We're now here from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Pam Porter with Team TLA Associates. Um, I had a presentation and is it on here? Yeah. Apologies for the delay. I'm here tonight with, um, Bill Harrow with Hopper Communities, Caroline Cheves with Ramy Kemp and Pat Barbeau with Timmins Group. They're also here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you to staff for the presentation and assisting us through our review process. Bruce gave a really good presentation, so I'm not going to harp too much on stuff that we've already talked about, but this just gives another map showing, um, our site with the surrounding neighborhoods noted. I would like to note, we had two neighborhood meetings. We had one on September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two before we made our submittal. Nine neighbors were in attendance and we had another neighborhood meeting last month. Three neighbors were in attendance. And we use the same notification requirements for both meetings. This is our concept plan that was just on the screen in the presentation.
Could you adjust your microphone a little bit? I think they're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay. Sorry, I was getting some feedback and it sounded very loud in my ears, but you, you guys need to hear me. I don't need to be loud to me, I need to be loud to you guys. So is that better?
Well, I think the whole system gets feedback a little bit, so, but that's better.
Okay. Perfect. So as, as Bruce noted in the presentation, we are requesting the rezoning to ZZR with a maximum of four hundred and fifty-seven units. And, um, after some discussion, we are willing to drop the density down to three units an acre. That would be a reduction of nineteen units to bring it in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Um, we're willing to, to make that adjustment if, if you guys are willing to accept that tonight. And we're also requesting annexation, as Bruce mentioned. And we're proposing a mix of single-family units and town homes and we are, we do have forty percent open space, which is a lot more than the twenty-five percent that's required. We are utilizing the fee-in- lieu option for the public recreation open space. And our proposal, although dense, does honor the existing environmental features such as the buffered streams and wetlands. And we only have two stream crossings shown on our property and you can see there's a whole lot of streams that we could have crossed, but we, we minimize that to two. Um, just want to talk about the layout real quick. So we do have the mix of singles and towns, which from reading the comprehensive plan, it looked to me like having the mix of residential units was something that was desired, which is why we're showing this. And we do have three different sized, single-family detached, seventy-two feet wide lots, sixty-two foot wide lots, and fifty-two foot wide lots. The smaller of those is along Vincent Road and as you go to the back of the property, the lots get bigger. And we know there's some sensitivity about town homes. So normally, town homes, which is the most dense part of a project, would be towards the road. We do have them insulated by the single-family detached units and that was a design decision that we made on purpose. We wanted to have the town homes, but insulate them interior to the project. And, um, as was noted, we do have a major amenity planned as well as other small recreational and open space areas throughout the property as well as areas to be conserved such as the, the wetlands and the stream buffers. We did not provide any elevations with our submittal because there's no builder that's been chosen for this yet, but, um, we do have some examples of what the homes will look like. They're for illustrative purposes only, um, because again, no builder has been chosen. And we are committing to the twenty-five percent masonry on the front facade. This just shows architectural style. For example, the, the top left picture doesn't have much masonry. So if something like that were chosen, there would be masonry on the front facade. And I'll just touch on a couple of our, um, our key zoning conditions. So we are limiting the use to single-family detached, single-family attached, which are the town homes, and permitted accessory uses. And it'll be a mixed residential project. The minimum heated square feet for the single-family detached would be two thousand square feet and the minimum heated square feet for the town homes will be fifteen hundred square feet. And, um, as Bruce mentioned, we are doing a pool and cabana. In addition to that, we're minimum of two of the following will be provided. Dog park, tot lot, multi-use field, picnic gazebo, disc golf, pickleball court, tennis court, mini park, plaza, square, green, private greenware trails, and community gardens. And, um, we are prohibiting vinyl siding. We know that that's been a sticking point for a lot of projects that vinyl is not, um, a well-received siding material. So we've decided to prohibit it as siding, but vinyl accents such as windows and other different decor could be allowed. And, um, we do have, uh, three access points off of Vincent Road with the one in the middle being for, um, emergency access only. We're required to provide three because- We're required to provide three because of the number of lots we have. But we had, we had concerns with, um, the distance between them all. So in discussions with staff, we were, um, we came to the idea that we just had the middle one be gated for emergency access only. And prior to approval, the construction drawings, the developer shall validate the adequate capacity in the downstream wastewater infrastructure, pump stations and force main to accommodate the proposed flow for the project. If adequate downstream capacity is not available, the applicant will complete any pump station or force main improvements in coordination with town staff to accommodate the proposed And, um, these are our roadway conditions. There is, um, uh, develop a signal modification plan for the eastbound right turn lane for NC 42 and Glen Laurel, for Glen Laurel and Vincent Road, providing an exclusive southbound left turn lane with appropriate storage and taper. Same thing, exclusive northbound left turn lane with appropriate storage and taper. For site driveway one, we're going to have a one egress and one ingress and egress striped as shared left through right turn and providing an eastbound left turn lane with at least 100 feet full width, storage and appropriate decel and taper and providing stop control. And likewise for site access to one ingress and egress striped lane with shared left through right, exclusive eastbound left turn lane with 100 feet of full width, storage and taper and providing a stop control for that as well. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And, um, if I can't answer them, I've got some folks that can, that answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? The discussion to potentially being amenable to reducing the the 457 units by 19 to be in compliance. Was that discussed with staff beforehand? Is that a condition, just something you're offering up for the planning board? Uh, as one of our potential recommended?
So we're, we're offering it up tonight. Um, we had talked to staff about the potential issue with being above three units an acre. And we're just above three units an acre, but it sounds like it's, um, could possibly make or break this project. So we are willing to reduce the density down to three units an acre. So I think the maximum would be 438 units with a reduction of 19.
Thank you. And also I was reading, I believe I saw the word quality, looking at your design elements. The word quality or high quality. Uh, I think you, you were, and I don't want to, I have an idea, but that's subjective. Uh, could you explain that? There was some information, I believe in the, in the packet, the word quality, uh, and high quality was, uh, used two to three times in some of the narrative. And I just wanted to make sure, how is that defined? It was in the packet that we were sent, uh, and.
Sure. And I can bring, um, Bill Harrell up to speak more to this if you'd like. But what we consider high quality design is using high quality building materials to construct the home. That led us to removing vinyl siding as a siding option. Having the minimum of 25% masonry in the front facade just creates a nicer looking home. It gives a mix of, um, facade and breakup of material.
Thank you. Any other questions? Board member, Applewhite?
Thank you all for being here. Um, as far as the traffic counts and how they were calculated, uh, could y'all talk more about, I guess, other than what we understand about how they do traffic counts generally, um, how the addition of the, the homes could, uh, change absent other densities that might be in that same place? So, so for example, if we were considering, uh, dwelling unit, two dwelling units per acre on this site as opposed to the, the proposed now three dwelling units, what changes in the traffic counts and how might that, uh, impact the Vincent Road specifically?
I'm going to ask Caroline Cheves with Ramey Kemp to come up and speak to that.
Hi, uh, Caroline Cheves with Ramey Kemp. Uh, there really is feedback. Um, I'm a professional traffic engineer licensed in the state of North Carolina and I prepared the TIA that was reviewed and approved by both the town and the NCDOT. Um, to answer your question, um, the, you're just asking about the trip generation essentially for this. Um, so I haven't actually run the new trip generation. Um, but I will say that the TIA and the conditions that we, um, are agreed to are based on this higher unit count. Um, so we're mitigating the traffic for a higher amount. But overall, the, um, I would have to see what the new plan would look like, um, to see, um, exactly how many trips would be reduced by removing the 19 units. Um, but for the most part, I mean, you would just essentially say if you're reducing it by approximately 20% of the density, you can reduce the trips by approximately 20% if that's, um, you know, sort of what you're getting at here with the, you said two units per acre.
I was just mainly asking for an example. I think what could be helpful, uh, for this board and folks that are here is to understand a little bit more about how those, uh, that analysis is completed and maybe you could speak to that, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, I can speak more about how we do our TIAs. Um, so as I mentioned, we have to collaborate with the NCDOT and the town. Um, so that includes scoping out the project with them. We, you know, show them the site plan and we show them the area and we just ask them, which intersections do you believe, um, will have, will have the biggest impact on? Um, and we'll study those intersections. That means collecting, um, peak hour counts. So during those rush hour periods, we're looking for that worst case scenario. So we'll, um, try and isolate at each intersection that peak hour. So, um, we'll collect counts for two hours and then we'll find that peak which each one, and it'll be unique to each intersection. And then similarly with, um, what we'll have to do is we'll have to project that traffic out to the future build year. So in this case, we projected that traffic using a compounded growth rate of 2% um, to 2030. So that's just like your bank account. It is compounded every year at 2%. Um, and then what we'll also do, and we didn't have any in this case, but we'll also take into account any future developments that have already been approved and we'll add that traffic in on top of that growth rate. Um, and we'll also take into account any future roadway improvements, any, you know, DOT projects that are coming online. And then on top of all of that, we'll add our site's traffic. And so, um, in this case, um, you know, we had the 255 unit, um, single family and 210, uh, town homes. We'll apply that to the roadway network. And again, that is something that's approved by the town and the DOT. And what we have to do is we have to mitigate the site's impact. Um, so we have to then compare that future condition without the site and compare the future condition with the site and make sure that our site, um, the roadway network can accommodate the site's traffic, the future traffic of the site. And that's why, uh, in this particular case, we studied five total intersections and we made recommendations at four of them that this development is providing improvement at. It's providing a lot of benefit, um, you know, to the public with these improvements that they're putting in, especially at the intersection, um, of Vincent and Glen Laurel Road. Those turn lanes, um, will improve that intersection a lot. And then C D O T is expected to have a signal installed there. Um, it's under construction now, um, and that's expected to come online before the, um, this development moves forward and certainly before those turn lanes go in. And then once those turn lanes go in, um, that intersection is going to operate much better than it does today. Um, and from there, after we, um, after we complete our study, we submit it to the town and the DOT and they review it, um, provide comments. Um, in this case, the comments were pretty minimal and, um, then here we are. So that's the TIA process. And I'd be happy to elaborate any more on that, um, if anyone has any more questions.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, woman Williams?
I have a question about the parking inside of the site. So who do I talk to about that?
Yeah. Um, I just do the public roads.
Right.
So that will be.
Could you pull that, uh, site map back up that you had? Yes, this one. So in the blue, those are the town homes, correct?
Correct.
And that's the front when you're coming in? To the, that's the front when you're coming in? He says you go to the back, the homes get bigger, right?
Right. So, yeah, when you enter the subdivision, the 52 foot wide lots are the first group of lots and then you drive into the town homes, correct?
Right. So if I'm at the bottom right and I go up to the blue and I make a right, that's a dead end down there, right?
With the T intersection? Correct.
And so each one of these town homes are 1,600 square feet. So that's two to three people in the home, more than likely, right?
Yeah.
So, um, but the 25 foot driveway, you only get two cars in the driveway. So there's going to be one on the road?
Possibly. I mean, it really just depends. We don't know how many people are going to be living in the town homes. It could be a single person with one car. It could be a, a couple with a small child. You know, we don't know who's going to buy the units, but correct. I mean, if there would be room for two people to park, one in the garage, one in the parking space behind it, if it's a one car garage. It could be that some of these have two car garages. You could park two in the garage and then two behind them. Again, we don't have a builder, so we don't know quite what that looks like. I think that the, go back to the, these show for the two bottom, the center bottom and the bottom right picture that are town homes, those show one car garages, but they could be two car garages, which would conceivably have four parking spaces.
Okay. Yeah. The reason I was asking is because, uh, I've heard a couple of the board members say, you know, consistency, right? Um, and this was, you've, um, deleted 19 units, um, already to make the traffic and the density and, um, parking available. I just seen a couple of developments that you can't even get in and out of the development because people parked on the road. So that's, it's a little concerning to me. I just want to bring that up.
No, I appreciate that. And with the reduction of units, we can also look into providing some guest parking or some auxiliary parking somewhere in that area. I think would be agreeable to that.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. I was just thinking about something. When we're talking about the, the 2045 density of three units per acre, just for... I'm trying to make sure I phrase the question right, but utilizing other conditional zones as special use permits. There are on occasion, some other developments in the town of Clayton that have been, that have exceeded that. This would not be an exception to the rule. I meant, it is an exception to the rule, but there are, I'm, I'm quite sure there are some other developments that may have exceeded that. Am I correct?
I don't know the approved densities off the top of my head for the other developments, but yes, I believe the council has approved conditional zoning districts with a higher density than the land use plan calls for.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda, uh, public comments on this matter. Are there members of the public that would like to speak on this matter? If so, so we can get, so we engage interest, could you please raise your hand if you plan to speak on this matter? Only about, only about eight. One of the things we request, and I think we make the same request on our city council meetings, if a speaker prior to you has basically, uh, stated your, your perspective, could you refrain from repeating that perspective? We're taking all the perspectives into account and listening to your comments so we don't have, uh, three or four speakers with duplicity, giving everybody an opportunity to be heard and tonight. And being that I only saw eight, about eight hands, I was going to limit to about three, make a three minute announcement with about eight hands. I believe, uh, we shouldn't be able to handle that without that. But, uh, so the first speaker, please come up and state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Hackler and I live at 530 River Knoll Drive off of Vincent Road. I'm a licensed professional civil engineer in the state of North Carolina and I'm currently employed as a transportation engineer with NCDOT. I also served on the Johnston County Planning Board for 12 years, the last year of which I was vice chair. And I just left the position a few months ago in February. I'm providing these credentials to you to establish my credibility as a qualified technical resource for that on which I plan to speak. Now you've cut me down greatly by giving me three minutes, so I'll try to keep my comments brief. I will note, these are my own comments and not those, uh, of my employer. I'm here because I have concerns over the development before you. Um, we've talked about the annexation of the two parcels into the town of Clayton and I found this rather unsurprising, considering that the parcels are currently under the jurisdiction of Johnston County. And, uh, some of you know well, that the present land zone by Johnston County is agricultural residential. And on lands such as this, the county typically only allows a density of about 1.45 dwelling units per acre. So what the developer is asking for here, and it's now gone from 3.13 to 3.12 to 3, it is still more than double what we would normally allow in Johnston County under their jurisdiction. So it begs the question to me, is the developer trying to circumvent the more strident regulations of the county by requesting annexation into the town? I can say with a good deal of assurance that had this come before the Johnston County Planning Board, as shown, it would likely have been denied. In my 12 years of serving on the board, I do not ever recall rezoning agricultural residential property, which is what this is currently, to allow for a development of this size and density. Another concern I have is the traffic generated by the development. The TIA that was provided shows 3,937 vehicles per day will result from this development. This is putting nearly 4,000 additional vehicles per day on Vincent Road, which is a two lane undivided stretch. And traffic capacity for a two lane rural road such as this is approximately 12,000 vehicles per day. It can sometimes go up to 16,000. But regardless, this means this one development alone would consume 25 to 30% of the capacity of the entire road. And I did not get a chance to measure Vincent Road before this meeting and I'm sorry for that, but I'm not sure if the road even currently meets the minimum NCDOT requirements for width. And now putting 4,000 extra cars on the road per day, my feeling is that development is too great in size and scope for this area and the infrastructure. Of course, I have serious concerns also about the town of Clayton's emergency personnel being able to take on the additional development of this size as this affects fire, rescue, police, EMS. I, neither could I find information on how many students this project would generate for Powhatan Elementary, Riverwood Middle and Clayton High. Um, there is a very accurate model available through Johnston County schools to predict these numbers. And I believe the citizens would probably like to know how this would tax the surrounding schools with new students. The developer is charged with providing documentation that the proposed improvements can accommodate additional impacts caused by the development. Um, I'm a little concerned that they have not done that. We are already very close to capacity of the existing sewer treatment capabilities in this area, but the developer just says that they're completing a study of the existing lift stations and the gravity sewer systems. Upgrades will be made as required. So how will this be accomplished? How do they plan to do that when they're adding 457, although I think it's now 438 units to an already overburdened and near capacity sewer system? In fact, the developer asked for in his application, 116,000 gallons... In fact, the developer asked for in his application 116,000 gallons per day of wastewater allocation from the town for this development. So yes, a new sewer treatment plan is currently in the planning and development stages, but it's still several years away from being operational. So that's very concerning. The developer is also supposed to show compatibility of the proposed development with the adjacent community. The only thing they say is that the development proposed is compatible with the character of the surrounding land uses, and I maintain it is not. Having this development in a relatively rural pocket of Clayton with 457 units, excuse me, 438 units, 207 of which would be townhomes allowed to be as much as 45 feet in height, is not in keeping with the surrounding zoning. It's not compatible in any way with the adjacent communities. In fact, I believe this would be an example of spot zoning, which is when a piece of property has special zoning applied to them that differs unfairly from the zoning all around them. And maybe we see developments like this in areas like 40 and 42, or interstate highway overlay districts, but certainly not here. Um, I also don't think there's a lot of developments in this immediate area that allow for 6,000-square-foot lots for single-family homes. That's 0.137 acres. That's very small. Um, I will say, in closing, the town of Clayton staff offered commentary at the end of the application. It was at the very end. They provided an inconsistency statement, which they talked about briefly, um, and for the benefit of the audience, the inconsistency state and, statement said, um, the request was inconsistent with the town of Clayton's comprehensive growth plan. It was inconsistent with the future land use plan. It was inconsistent with the, um, density because it was over, well, and I'm sorry they keep changing the density, but it originally was over the dense, maximum density of three dwelling units per acre. It was, um, inconsistent due to them having more than 25% single-family attached units, which are the townhomes. So the nail in the coffin is that town staff said the proposed conditional zoning district is inconsistent due to surrounding zoning districts not permitting a project of such density by requesting a density over double that of the parcel surrounding the subject, and because the percentage of, because of the percentage of the single-family attached units. So this development is inconsistent with surrounding zoning. It is incompatible with land use in the vicinity, and in many ways will overtax the existing infrastructure, from schools to roads to sanitary sewer to emergency services. This development is a detriment to our community, not a benefit. With these things in mind, I respectfully would like to say, first and foremost, I would recommend denial of the annexation of this property into the town of Clayton. Let the developer instead submit this to Johnston County and beheld stricter regulations. However, should annexation occur, then at the very least, the requested rezoning should be unequivocally denied due to zoning incompatibility, inconsistency with surrounding land use, and an overburden to our town.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Gary Ogul. I live at, uh, 2101 Hidden Valley Drive. Uh, first of all, I would like to say that I am against the rezoning, and I agree with the lady that it should go to the, uh, Johnston County for approval, not the town of Clayton. I also found it odd that when they were showing the proposed, the, uh, current neighborhoods around this proposed development, Hidden Valley was completely omitted. Um, the traffic that this is gonna bring is just unacceptable. The, the addition of hundreds of homes and townhomes, uh, is just gonna completely change our country environment around where we live. There's also something, uh, that no one has mentioned that, that I have to mention to you. There will be adverse effects to the adjacent communities. If you will look at the map, you see the T in the blue area there. On either side of that T, there are streams in the wooded areas. These streams carry all of the runoff from the pond and the land that is around that area. With all the pavement for the new streets and the addition of the townhomes and hundreds of parking spots, that's gonna add lots of concrete and pavement. As I said, all of that runoff comes down those two streams and converges onto my neighbor and my property. Every bit of that water then flows through one four-foot culvert that goes under Hidden Valley Drive. The streets in Hidden Valley are privately maintained. They're not maintained by the town of Clayton, Johnston County, or the state of North Carolina. They're maintained by us, the residents of Hidden Valley. We paid for the pavement, and we pay for all the repairs to our streets. With this added water flow, it has the potential to flood the back of my property and my neighbor's property. And during a bad storm, hurricane, tropical storm, it definitely has the potential to wash out Hidden Valley Drive, which once again is private. Who would pay for the reparations, the, uh, repair of our road, Hidden Valley? That being said, I have begun taking pictures of the stream, taking videos, so that I can document what the current water flow is for the next year or two until this comes to light, and I will be able to prove that if that is washed out, or if my property is destroyed, I can prove that this development caused it. And then we will be looking for, hold responsibility for repairs and compensation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and, and, uh, the board. Uh, my name is Jerry Dodson. I am Mr. Ogul's neighbor on the other side of the creek. Um, I'll try not to reiterate a lot of what Mr. Ogul had to say, and I'll try to touch on some other stuff here. But we are very, uh, concerned about the runoff from this development. Think I can count on a development probably being there at some point, but not at this density. We just don't need it. I've been out there since about, uh, my wife actually bought the property in about 95, so we've been there a long time. We've enjoyed the countryside that we have had. Up until recently, there were cows on this property. My grandkids love to go out and feed the cows. This isn't gonna be anymore. But let's touch on other stuff. There is mention of road widening, turn lanes, and et cetera. And just coming out of our subdivision, we are only a short distance from the, um, the bottom entrance to the subdivision you're talking about here. We already have so much traffic on that road that we have to sit there, or it seems like forever, to even get out on the Vincent Road. And even if you put in turn lanes to this other entrance here, our vision of the oncoming traffic is gonna be blocked by the cars, the traffic that's making a left turn to come into this subdivision. And if to the, when we come out of our subdivision, if we look to the right or to the left, we're looking downhill, and the next subdivision is Sierra Heights at the top of that hill. Now, we can sit there until we see that we don't have any traffic coming, and go ahead and pull out, and by the time we get straightened out on the road already, there's somebody on our bumper. Traffic is, it's just horrendous out there. Now, the other thing I wanna mention about the traffic, Powhatan School is there. If any of you have been out there at school dismissal time in the afternoons, traffic is backed up both directions there at school entrances. And if I'm coming from Clayton to go to my house, I have to sit there, and either till the road clears, or I have to get over in the left lane, which is next, uh, it, that is in an S curve, to try to get around the blockage to get to my house. So what is gonna happen when this subdivision comes in with all the density you're talking about now? Where's that gonna leave us? Another thing, the traffic is my main concern right now. There have already been four accidents within the past few months on Vincent and on Glenlaw. And if I'm not mistaken, there, the two of those were fatalities. I just wanna mention that. And you're talking about, um, the rear setback on this development here. That was gonna be 15 feet, and then you're gonna have a, uh, an opaque, um, inch, basically, a grade C, which to me, I don't know the graduations, but C is two letters down from A. So we're not getting the best, are we? So all the privacy I've been used to over the years here is gonna be no more. We're gonna have two-story houses looking over a 10-foot fence, maybe. So there goes our tranquility. Plus, I'm concerned about the noise this is gonna make, the lighting that's gonna disrupt. My sister-in-law, who lives with us, loves to go out at night and sit and look at the stars. How many stars is she gonna be able to see after the streetlights are put up in this The other thing I wanna mention is the water table. Most of our neighbors out there have, well, all of us, have wells and individual sewers. What is the, this development gonna do to the water table that is supplying our wells? Where's that gonna leave us? Now, when my well goes dry, is the town of Clayton or anybody else gonna drill me a new well? I know you'll run some piping out there probably and charge me three, four, $5,000 to hook onto it, but is all that necessary right now?
Thank you.
My name is Josh Nash. I live at 63 Rainwater Court. Uh, we recently, within the last year, moved in to our, our new home there, and unfortunately, we have never, ever received any notification for this development in any of the, uh, presentations that have taken place. So thankfully, we had some neighbors that made us aware recently about this. Uh, my profession is a landscape architect. I work on some really, really, really large projects prior to moving to North Carolina, and so I'm very familiar with development. And I concur exactly with what has been said, uh, previously. Um, one of the things, and I'm not gonna reiterate those, 'cause, you know, hopefully you just hear that I would say it again, but one of the things that I would ask the planning commission to consider is that, uh, these are rural wooded roadways, and this constant degradation and removal and development of land without maintaining buffering of the vegetative state is leading to degradation of, of our community and our areas. And it, it's gonna impact the stormwater runoff, uh, as well as the visual impact to our, to our community that, of the existing neighbors along here. Finally, what I'd like to address is, uh, the road, the, um, density that's proposed along Vincent Road, uh, we would, if you're going to consider this, we would at least ask you to, uh, change the density at least along Vincent to increase the setback off of Vincent Road, and to go to a much wider lot, if you're even gonna consider that, which we would hope that you would not.
My name is Jay Vincent. I live at 2201 Jack Road. Um, my family has a farm on Vincent Road between the, um, Glenlaw subdivision where your current, um, utilities are and the, um, new proposed subdivision, and, um, I was just wondering, um, the plan was very ambiguous as to how the town would be providing the utilities, and if they would have to, um, cross our land, because if they did have to cross our farm, it would profoundly, um, impact our farm and our, you know, enjoyment of our property.
In regards to the, I think Duke Energy is providing the power, so you're, you're speaking for water and sewer?
Yes, I'm, I'm speaking for the water and sewer.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna put my engineering hat on. I'm the interim planning director and assistant engineering director. So as engineering, as assistant engineering director, uh, being involved in the utilities, the water will be provided from Vincent Road. There's existing county water lines. The town of Clayton is a bulk purchaser of water from the county, so we can make connections to the county line. Really, in any general vicinity, there's a metering process that would take place. Um, the applicant will be responsible for determining and constructing the final alignment of any sewer infrastructure, um, but at this time and at this conceptual level, there is no finite detail of, of what that looks like, um, but the town would not necessarily be involved in the procurement and installation of that utility.
So, um, our farm would not be able to be condemned, um, or we would not be required to allow any kind of, um, utilities access on our property, is what you're saying?
Yes. Unless the town was involved, and it was a public-funded project, the condemnation would not take place.
Okay, because, um, you know, our, the farm has been in our family over 100 years, um, and it just, it means a lot to our family, so I was just trying to make sure, because that was very ambiguous in the plan.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dr. Jennifer Cameron, and I live at 205 Bridge Drive. I wanna thank everybody for the information that was presented today that was very helpful, as well as my neighbors for expressing your concerns so well. I just want to add to some of the traffic concerns. Um, I am a mother of two children, and we walk to Powhatan Elementary School. As was stated, it gets pretty dicey out there. Um, we have had concerns at times for our neighbors that are not stopping when we're crossing Vincent Road. Some things that I did not hear included in the plan are, how will improvements to adherence to the speed limit and enforcement of the speed limit be addressed if this plan moves forward? Please take the safety of our children and our parents who are walking to and from school, which if you are connected to the school system is highly encouraged. Um, there is, in October, I believe it is, a, a walk to school day, and that is something that is a healthy activity. It is something that we very much enjoy in, with my family, um, and I would hate to not be able to do that due to safety. We moved into the neighborhood from a neighborhood where there was, the, the distance was very walkable, however, it was not safe to do that, so we cherish that opportunity, and I would really like to protect that for my family for as long as it lasts, as well as for other families. Um, I am also, um, want to address some of the potential adverse impacts on the community. I have a doctorate in medical psychology, and that means that I meet people at the intersection of their medical concerns, their physical health concerns, and their mental health concerns. And the statements that I'm making do not reflect the views of my employer, they are my own. Um, what I want to say, though, is that when I hear, especially the mothers of this community, that they are often not able to access the resources that they need for both their physical health needs and their mental health needs. I know that is beyond this particular project, however, there may be some additional details in the requirements that you have for any plan to move forward. Um, I do ask that you do consider those concerns, that the resources that we need just to simply take care of ourselves and our families can be considered with this project and future projects.
My name's James Wolfgang.
My name is James Wolfgang. I live at 1635 Vincent Road, right across from, between the two entrances. I was privy to both of the prior meetings that we had. And this is going to sound a little bit repetitious to the ladies because I keep coming up with this, one of the same concerns. Most of the things that I had to say tonight have been covered except for the scent that comes from the treatment of the plant. And that is something, that, that is something that if you cross 42 on, over the Noose on 42 and you catch that light and the wind's blowing the right way, you'd know exactly what I'm talking about. Those poor people that own in that subdivision now have a difficult time getting the value out of their house because of the scent that's there most of the time. When this goes in, it's going to be in a position where, where I live, I don't believe I'll be involved too much with it. These gentlemen that live on Hidden Valley and the people who own, that'll have to go in back near the Noose River. And so the people who own those houses, the high-dollar houses back there, will eventually see what I'm talking about also. Now, when they put the treatment plan in, there are different grades of scent reduction. And what I'm asking you is if this goes through, if this is still passed, that at least that the council sees to it that the degree of scent is at the most, at the minimum possible amount. And they can do a pretty good job with some of that sometimes. But there's so many levels that, you know, we don't want to live with that if we can help it. So that's my only concern because these people have addressed my questions pretty much fully. Thank you.
Any other mayor of the public would like to speak on this item?
Hello, my name is Basil Chisopoulos. I'm at 238 Hawksburg Drive in Clayton, North Carolina. Can I just, do you mind if I hit the button just to go up one slide? Same character. There it is. Okay. So I am actually the president of Stone Ridge. I'm actually an engineer as well. And there are two items. One's quick, one's a little bit more lengthy. The quick one, as we look at this map, we can see Vincent Road there. Stone Ridge is right next to Glen Laurel, which is off of the map. But you have Stone Ridge, you have Glen Laurel, you have Windsor Green, Sierra Heights, and the noles at the Noose. And then you have this development that's, you know, currently being discussed. The amount of units per acre was discussed. I guess my suggestion, and it's actually kind of feeding off of what Mr. Derek Applewhite was inquiring about earlier. You know, it would be really good to know, we know how many homes they're proposing in this site, but it would be good to know the homes in each of the surrounding developments and actually get that bird's eye view of comparing what's currently existing today and what's being proposed. Because that's a real quick look at getting a high-level view of what this proposal means and how it compares to the surrounding communities. So that was my first point. I would like that perhaps the traffic engineer to look at that for comparison. The second point I would like to point out, I happen to be one of the Clayton, you know, civilians that actually is part of the Clayton pedestrian planning organization here in Clayton. And I actually have it right here on my phone and I just referenced it. The fatalities in Clayton, per Clayton, is from 2009 to 2019, as I look on a map here, there were six fatalities in a duration of 10 years. One of those six fatalities was right on Vincent Road. All right, 10 years, six fatalities, one in six on Vincent Road. And you're planning to add more population on a road that one in six fatalities in the town was, took place on that road. So this is a very large issue that should be considered carefully. And we should look at the data that we currently have and consider safety. Because I think that's a very big point that over 10-year time, that, you know, happened right there on Vincent Road. So that's all I have.
Good evening, planning board. My name is Jeff Holland and I live in Windsor Green, right across from the area that's in red. I learned about this through the next-door side. I had not known that this was being proposed, but nonetheless, it has been and evidently there have been two neighborhood meetings about it. But I want to say that I do certainly concur with everything that's been said up here. I certainly support all of these concerns that have been brought forth and I echo those. I want to add one thing to this on top of that, though. If notwithstanding everything that you've heard, that you still move forward with this, then you, as a planning board, can ask for conditions to be put on this plan. And I'd like to recommend one to you that hasn't been mentioned tonight. I'm the father of two sons with disabilities. And I want to mention two things here that were decisions in the United States. The Olmstead decision was a U.S. Supreme Court decision that said individuals with intellectual disabilities have the right to live in the community rather than in institutions. And not in group homes, just individual residences. In 2022, here in North Carolina, the Samantha R. decision required North Carolina to allow people with ADD to live in the community with supports and services they need to succeed. And so as a planning board, you can recommend conditions be added to this if you decide to move forward with it. And I would recommend that you, that you would recommend that 20 to 30 lots in this new subdivision be set aside for people with disabilities, for them to have residences in this community. And that this developer, these developers partner with nonprofit organizations that can make this happen. And so if you do move forward with it, I would love to see them sow into the community because scattered throughout this county are many young adults that are looking for housing and they're looking for affordable housing. And if these developers were to choose to sow in such a way and partner with organizations that can get these set up, then that would also be something that could at least bring something very positive into the lives, lives of people with disabilities. Thank you.
Next.
Hello, my name is Susan Moore. I had no intention of speaking, but no one has mentioned this yet. I felt that it did need to be mentioned. I live in Glen Laurel, which you can see. From my understanding, there is going to be another subdivision built on the corner of Vincent and Glen Laurel Road. I don't know if everybody's aware of that. But nobody's brought that up. And that's going to add another tremendous amount of problems as far as traffic, having enough schools for our kids. We're talking about, again, making sure we have enough power and sewage for these places. So we're talking about this site, which we're obviously, for the most part, not happy with. And then we have another one that at our local last community meeting, we were informed of, that's going to be built down this way at the very corner of that intersection. So when you're talking about two subdivisions being built on a road that already cannot handle the traffic that we have, there is a problem. And also, I'd like to say, just from listening to what I've heard tonight and my friends in this beautiful town, we are not happy with what's happening. If you go down Covered Bridge Road, which we know has been a traffic nightmare for years, the amount of houses that were allowed to be built there, in our minds, is ridiculous. We are putting homes up before we have roads prepared, before we have adequate schools. That is a problem. I've taught in this county for 30 years. It was wonderful when I got here. I can't say the same now. And it makes me very sad. Thank you.
You know, we, when I eliminated the town in the beginning, only about eight of you said you wanted to speak. And now I think the longer we go on, more and more people. I know you, you and this lady over here in the black, you stood up like four or five times. You might want to move closer to the dais, to get your opportunity, come up to the podium. I know you've been trying to speak. So I just wanted to make sure we keep you moving, some people wanted to speak. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Beth Crater. I live at 2101 Hidden Valley Drive with Mr. Ogle. We talk about lot comparison sites, first of all, that nobody's really brought up. Hidden Valley, all the lots in that area are two to four acres. So we appreciate our privacy. We like it. We enjoy nature. We have a ton of wildlife. That's number one. My biggest concern about all of this is the only people that got notification of this were those that along Hidden Valley Drive and those along Vincent Road. You're talking 438 homes. That impacts a lot of people. A lot of these people wouldn't have shown up tonight had not we posted on Facebook to be out here, to show up. That's, that's how these people showed up. This is unfair to the community of Clayton. This impacts all of Clayton. It impacts thousands of people and homes that live up there. And shame on the council and shame on the company for only notifying, what, maybe 25 people? This impacts a lot of people and there need to be more meetings on this before you go ahead and decide on this. I think that's only fair to ask. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Christy Buckley. I live on 73 Sky Grove Drive in Glen Laurel. And when I was looking at all this online, when I heard about it from our Facebook page, I looked up the planning board and it says that you all are here to help ensure proposed development does not adversely impact the health, safety, and welfare of Clayton while assuring the protection of the town's character and providing high-quality development. I think it's obvious that most of us here believe that this would absolutely negatively impact the safety, welfare. It would adversely impact all of us. I have five boys, one of which is driving already. It's a nightmare to drive on it now, Vincent and Glen Laurel. It's a nightmare. The gentleman mentioned that there was a fatality on Vincent Road. There was also one on Glen Laurel, just recently. I will eventually have five people driving on these roads. There's no stoplight. There's, Vincent is never monitored for speed because the town of Clayton's, you know, Clayton Police Department said, "We can't do it. It's not on us." So the traffic levels are already unsafe. The schools are already at max capacity. And then how are these kids going to get to school? Is there going to be buses coming here? That also has a huge negative impact on the traffic. I think that this will have an impact for way more than what we've said, and, and none of it is positive. So I'm, I'm going to ask you guys to read your own mission statement and then think about what we said. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the panel. My name is John Scarpa and I live in Glen Laurel at 1304 Glen, excuse me, 1304 Noose Ridge Drive. And the reason why I have a little trouble is because I'm a recent immigrant from Cary, which I left. And, and I came to, to Clayton because it's a beautiful place. But if you allow this, you won't be able to disallow the next one or the next one. You'll have set a precedent that will change the character of this community that I immigrated to. Now, I hate to say this, but you might be able to tell already from my accent that I'm not a native North Carolinian. I chose to come here. I chose to come to North Carolina for a lot of different reasons. But one of the most important was the character of the nation and the character of the town of Clayton. I went to Cary. It was too much like New York, where I'm originally from. Okay? There's a story that the Arabians tell of a camel trying to get its way into a tent. And you probably already know it. But the camel isn't allowed into the tent, but he just sneaks his nose under and the master says, "You get out of my tent." And the camel says, "No, master, just let me keep my nose under." Well, very shortly thereafter, the entire camel is in the tent. Look at Vincent Road, please. Look at Vincent Road. I live three houses in off of Vincent Road. I know that we're all complaining about and telling you about the traffic conditions. And I know that you already know that we're right. And they admitted it. Oh, there's going to be additional traffic. The road is already insufficient for the traffic that's there. So what's the solution, ladies and gentlemen? Well, the camel says, "We're going to fix the ends. That won't be enough in a very short period of time." The next thing you know, Vincent Road will be 42. And that's what's going to happen. And if you allow this to go through, you will be the instrumentalities that cause that. And here's the thing, I know from experience, I'm only 70 years old, I know I look younger. Here's the thing, I grew up on Long Island. I moved to Old Bethpage in the center of Long Island in 1958. There were potato farms where I grew up. By the time I left, the hodgepodge that planning boards in individual towns allowed to happen created a nightmare. The traffic on Long Island is unbelievable. But prove this. And welcome to Long Island South. You're going to create a monstrosity if you do this. You've got to be the sentinels for the community. You've got to be the ones that stand between us and unmitigated development. These people are here because they want to make an awful lot of money. We were here because we want a quality of life. We came here for the quality of life. Don't let them take it away from us.
I'm probably going to get booed. My name is Art Holder. I live at 16 Huckmont Court in Clayton, which is in Glen Laurel. I was born in Clayton in 1938 on Church Street. I met my wife in Raleigh in 1960 and I have had a connection in I met my wife in Raleigh in 1960, and I have had a connection in Clayton for almost 63 I have seen Clayton's population grow from less than 5,000 to over 25,000 in 2020. It's projected to go to 50,000 in 2030. I served on the Clayton Town Council for 12 years. Growth is good. Growth is progress. Nova Notice recently spent $11.3 million on additional land on Powtown Road to make sure they could expand in the future here in Clayton. They're the second-largest employer in Johnston County. They spent over $2.3 billion in the last six years on a new plant to make insulin pills for diabetics. This plant, when fully operational, will employ 700 people. Their average salary is $70,000 a year. That's $49 million it puts into Clayton economy, or in Johnston County economy, a When they expand, there will be a need for housing. There will be other companies, as well as other companies like Griffles and others that come in. The development proposed on Vincent Road will have upscale housing with crawl spaces and upscale siding. Clayton has a need for upscale housing. And there are townhouses, and the demand for townhouses are high. Clayton, over the last 12 years I was on the council, Wiggs approved a ton of high-density housing. And I'm glad to see a development coming in with some upscale housing, because a lot of people have bought beginner homes, and they want something they can move into that's upscale a little bit. The land that most of the ones here protesting used to be woodland, pastures, and farmland. This is the land they live on. If protests had been done then, they wouldn't be here. They wouldn't have homes. They wouldn't have what they like about being in Clayton. During the 63 years I've been connected with Clayton, roads have not been improved, nor schools built, and the need has developed. Look at 42 East. They've been working on that for five years. Should have been finished two years ago. But there's a need there. And as traffic picks up on Glen Laurel Road and Vincent Road, there's going to be a need for improvements on that road. And I foresee in the future a stoplight at Vincent Road and Glen Laurel Road. Also, as the traffic on Vincent Road reaches a critical point, the department will have to address these issues on all these roads. Thank you.
Michael White, 416 Neuse Ridge Drive. I would like to offer a couple of points that have not been brought up. Unless I misunderstood or misheard, there are a couple of flaws with the traffic study, and one of them is the fact that it only took into account 2% growth. I don't know the math. I haven't looked it up, but I'm pretty sure our current growth over the last five years has been well above that. Therefore, their traffic study is flawed. I also drove through the intersection of Glen Laurel and Vincent this morning on my way to work, as I was stuck there. There is no traffic light currently under construction there, and we all know the current status of 42 and how long it takes for the DOT to get projects approved and completed. The traffic study also does not address the traffic impact for Glen Laurel and Powtown. That is not even mentioned in their plan at all. And as a member of the community of Glen Laurel, we already have a problem with community residents parking and then walking their kids right across the street. 400-plus homes, not all of those children going to Powtown Elementary will be taking the bus. My concern is that both Glen Laurel and Gordon Park will see additional cars blocking the entrance as we are trying to get to work and come home safely without hitting parents or children parking in the neighborhood. Thank you.
My name is Joe Lalo. I'm at 110 Heath Green Drive in Glen Laurel. I'm right about where the triangle is in the yellow, in the big yellow box. I'm right at that triangle. I've lived here five years. I came down here from Maryland. We've had broken pipes in the water system for two to three years. Now, I'm former law enforcement. I'm very suspicious of the infrastructure of the water system. Maybe I'm out there somewhere, maybe I'm not. But when three pipes are broken in four years, I got a problem with that. Somebody needs to explain to me, "Why are we under water restrictions? I only can use the water from my pool when I'm mowing my lawn for three days a week. If we got water, give me the water." This lady in the purple gave us some outstanding numbers on the water. I'm afraid I ain't going to have no water. Water is an issue countrywide, just not in Clayton. Do me a favor. I'm going to text y'all, meet with the water department and get the right answers. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sue Joy, and I live in Riverstone at 325 Riverstone Drive. And I only recently heard about all this to do through the various outlets that were mentioned. And so I came here tonight with an open mind to hear both sides about what was going on. And I must say that all evening, I haven't heard one upside to this for us. It's not to our advantage at all. And the gentleman in the pink shirt was talking about the providing of upscale housing. Well, my first thought when I heard about this, instead of cramming all these tiny little tiki-taki things into a small space, why not provide some luxury housing? Why not put a million-dollar house on an acre of land? Because there's a market for that, and it would have a lot less impact than what's being
Doreen Lamb, I just wanted to add to that, that there was a newspaper article recently saying how people are flocking to Johnston County, and they're looking for three things. They're looking for land, they're looking for large homes, and they're looking for homes with offices. And what I'm seeing in the site that's being proposed is small, small homes, townhomes, which are completely out of character in our neighborhood, in our communities. We are all about single-family housing. So I would hope that there would be some consideration given to that. Where there's a demand is for larger homes, single-family homes. People want land. They don't want to live cramped. That's why they come out to the country where we live. And we're blessed to have a choice whether we want to live in a town, and live in a city, or live in the country. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Thank you. I'll turn it over to the planning board for their consideration. Yes, Mr. Liskin.
Okay. Thank everybody for your comments and coming out tonight. I've been sitting up here looking at the future land use plan, and I've been looking at the agricultural rural residential designation, which is up to two units of density per acre. And I've also been toggling back and forth between that and Johnston County GIS, and I believe predominantly on Vincent Road, if not 100% on Vincent Road, you could say that that is two units of acre, two units of acre of density or less. Looking at a low-density residential, I don't even know if this would have been considered when the plan was adopted, if this wouldn't have been targeted for ARR, which is the agricultural residential zoning parts proposal designation, excuse me, that would be two units per acre density. I think that this plan, the thing that I cannot support is the density of townhomes. And I do feel that, I was having a hard time finding where the closest townhome is compared to this neighborhood. So personally, for what it matters, I'm going to vote to not recommend, to deny, but to recommend denial of the application. And it's totally 100% due to the density of the townhomes. I do believe that people have a right to develop their land, sell their land, people have a right to develop. I actually do develop. But I also believe that it needs to be consistent with the character, and that's why I'm making my recommendation.
We were taking notes. I was wondering if we'd get a chance to respond to some of the comments from the community.
That would be up to the planning board itself, if they have any follow-up questions to you. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we were all taking notes. I'm going to have Pat Barbeau speak to the issues with the utilities and the sewer. And Caroline Chiefs will talk about the traffic, because that came up quite a few times. I do want to say, when we did our neighborhood meetings, we noticed per the requirements of Clayton, had we known we should have expanded our neighborhood outreach, I think we would have done that, but we did it per the published requirements. But...
And the published requirements are the adjacent property owners, right?
It's whatever's published in the neighborhood notification rules for the town. I think staff can speak specifically.
What I'm saying is, you adhere to the standards that were required on the notification of the adjacent property owners.
Right. And we also, we had two meetings, but I do appreciate when things are shared and people give us feedback. I mean, we do appreciate all the feedback we've gotten tonight. We find it to be very helpful. I would like to thank Mr. Wolfgang and Mr. Ogil for being out here tonight. They attended both of our meetings with, they both attended the last one. With regard to some of the flooding, I'll let Pat get into that a little bit more. But we are required to provide stormwater ponds that capture and treat the stormwater from our development. And we did offer during our last meeting to walk the site with Mr. Ogil and look at areas of concern, and we could adjust our plan to mitigate any issues that might occur with the townhomes being really close to his property.
Why are you on that subject? Could you, some people may not understand that, I saw on your site plan, I mean, not site, but you had the map, you showed the retention pond. And some people may not understand that all of your runoff for a subdivision has to be captured on-site, not just running off into the, to the wetlands. You have to capture it on-site. And then, once it's captured on-site, could you discuss that release?
I'll have Pat speak to that, but we do have to capture, it's state regulation. And also, the site's not been fully engineered, so we do have time to make adjustments to pond locations that are the most beneficial to our property at that time. When we do a layout like this, we only show the ponds in the low spots, kind of give you an idea of where they're going to be located, but they have not been sized yet. One of the things that Mr. Wolfgang brought up, I believe it was him, was about housing for folks with special needs. And we don't have a builder, but one thing that we will discuss with builders, as we've done this on other projects, is if we could have houses, townhomes and single-family detached that have no stair entries and first-floor main bedroom and bathroom. That helps with accessibility issues, and we'd be happy to bring that into the discussion with some of the builders that the developer is talking with. I think our presentation went away, but with regard to density, there are a couple neighborhoods in this area that are, per the map we had up, that are higher density. Tuscany and Sierra Heights are fairly dense neighborhoods. I would assume that they probably got some pushback when those got approved, because they are significantly more dense than some of the other things around here. So I know a lot of the neighbors have been talking about big lots and big homes, but there are other denser neighborhoods in the vicinity of what we're proposing. So I just wanted to make a note of that. And somebody mentioned about the buffer around our project. The way the buffers work is A, B, C. A is transparent, B is semi-transparent, C is opaque. So although in school, C is not a good grade, in the town, it's the thickest buffer you can put on a site to make it so you can't see through it. So I just wanted to make a note of that. I know neighbors are concerned with that. And then, streetlights, we have to have streetlights as part of our design, but it's going to be per code. They're usually spaced, I think, 200 feet apart or more. We're not going to light the neighborhood up and have it be just one big lit area like an auto park. It's going to be lit up like streetlights in any other neighborhood. So with that, I'll have Pat come up and speak to the utilities and the stormwater.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Barbeau. I'm senior project manager of the Timmins Group. Locally, I've designed the Publix and all the attached retail and Flowers Plantation. We're doing some...
Could you pick the mic up for just a little bit?
Sure. Is that better? Okay. My name is Patrick Barbeau. I'm a senior project manager with the Timmins Group. Locally, I've designed the Publix and Flowers Plantation and the attached retail spaces, designing some restaurants over Flowers Plantation, so I'm familiar with the Clayton area. I want to address the stormwater runoff. As Jonathan Jacobs can verify, our site would not get approved if we increased the runoff. The construction drawings, that's a state law that post-development runoff has to be equal to or less, and it's always usually less than the pre-existing conditions. And we'd have multiple, you know, five, six or more, you know, stormwater ponds on-site. The ponds are designed for water quality and retention, so they're designed to take phosphorus and nitrogen, sediments, heavy metals. They'll drop out of the stormwater. The pond will detain the stormwater between three and five days and release the stormwater slowly. I'm sure you all have seen ponds, but the big concrete boxes with the different holes in them to slowly release stormwater, you know, over extended time to not flood out the adjacent neighbors. Did you have any further questions on the stormwater? Sure.
I was trying to get a point of clarification based on some of the comments. Thank you.
I'd also like to address the sewer capacity issues. The topography of the site drops very steeply off from Vincent Road to the Neuse River behind it. There's quite a big grade drop, so we will have to have a pump station on-site that'll be relocated at the back of the site. This pump station will be designed to not only handle the sewer from our site, but we'll also design it to handle the adjacent sites. We've met with Clayton Public Utilities, and they mentioned that they've had a lot of maintenance issues with some of the Glen Laurel pump stations. They're designed throughout the golf course, very hard to access them. And we'll also be designing our pump station to allow, at least Glen Laurel Pump Station Number Three to be... to be taken offline in the future. As the adjacent parcels develop, they will be able to tie into this, into our pump station, our regional pump station. And our pump station, our force main will be designed to handle all this flow and will connect to the Summerlin Pump Station. We have a utility group within Timmins, and they're actually under contract now to work with the Town of Clayton's Public Utility Department. They will be, they will doing an analysis of the Summerlin Pump Station to see if it has to be upgraded to handle all this additional flow in the future.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Back to the board for their consideration. As part of the consideration, you know, any board added recommend, added conditions has to be accepted by the applicant before going forward to council. We do have one recommendation submission that was offered by the applicant of reducing the units from 457 to 438. So, that could be a condition, any consideration. If a board member wants to make a motion for approval, they can add that as an additional condition. Just wanted to make sure all the board understood that, reduce it to 438. Yes, sir.
I want to commend you for looking up that as everyone was speaking. Most of us that are on this board, we volunteer because we are your neighbors. I live on Barbara Mills Road. I grew up on Winston Road in Clayton. Graduated from Clayton High School. This is the elementary school that I went to. This is the gym when I was at elementary school. So, I've seen Clayton grow. These three gentlemen in the back row here, the last two years, all of us have been working very hard to learn about what our responsibilities are. And our responsibility is to make sure that the zoning, everything will pass with the law, the regulations and things that are hand down. And I agree with you that people want to come in and build 100 houses to make millions of dollars. That's what we're here for, to make sure that the small-town feel that we all said that we wanted to keep is still here. Okay? So, I just want to say that before we, before we go and do our recommendations, we, we love Clayton as well. That's why we volunteered to be on the planning board. We give up a lot of time with our families, just to make sure that your families are happy and safe. And yes, I sit in the line at Clayton High School for about 45 minutes to an hour each morning, you know, dropping off my kids. So, we feel what you guys are saying. We hear you. I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Yes, Mr. Powers.
It seems as though there have been a number of items that the applicant has become aware of or may have been aware of, that they say that it has not been addressed yet. The one, they don't have a builder yet, and so they can't, cannot answer some of the questions on the elevations of the buildings, houses, townhomes. And there have been other things outside of that. Would it be beyond what we're supposed to do here to table this, to give the applicant a chance to make, to address some of these things that have come up that they can change? They, they changed the thing about the number of lots. I don't think that anything that's going to be done is going to make everybody happy. But if they are more aware now than when they came in of some of the objectionable parts of this, would that be an avenue, sir?
Be up to the board for potential tabling. But I believe the applicant offered in searching for the builder, they've already, as conditions placed that far as the exterior of the homes would not have vinyl, the front facade would be 25% masonry. And so, no vinyl siding, so you're talking about probably more like hardy plank or some type of cement board. Vinyl windows are probably vinyl shelters. But other than that, I think, which is, no matter what builder they choose, eventually is approved. I think they are committed to those conditions because that would be a part of what they've offered.
Yeah, that I can see, and I agree with that. Just a minor thing was the retention ponds. They evidently, on the pictures that we had, on the layout we had, they were just out there to show they're going to have retention ponds. They're not specifically put where they're going to go. They were still walking the land to see about the runoff on the backsides of the, of the thing, stuff like that, that they said they're doing. And if it's, if we don't want to table this for right now, that's fine. I was just taking that into consideration. If one side wants to make some of the changes that are being asked for, do we just want to either go with what they have now or stop the whole thing?
Will of the board?
I think we should send it to the council with the recommendation. And if the applicant wants to make modifications between now and the council, they're free to. But I think that we need to make our determination based off what was presented before us tonight.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment very briefly. I think that it's important to recognize there is a housing demand and there's a need for housing, not only in our community across the state. And I think townhomes can be a perfectly good mix to the housing problem that we face. Along with other board members do have some concern about the amount of townhomes and the density of the townhomes within the community. And the way that the density is calculated is based on the full acreage, some of which is not buildable area on the backside of the property. And that's something to consider, that the density, though it's being calculated for the full site, the buildable, you know, calculation may be different. And y'all can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But as we think about how the density applies, and, you know, if we're looking at our 2045 map, I don't think that perhaps this development would fit in there. It has the, you've now decided to move it down to three dwelling units per acre, and I think folks would appreciate that, but it still does have the outstanding issue of it does not have less than 25% of the attached units being a part of that mix. I think right now, it's closer to 48 or 49% of the total mix. So, I think in order for this board to consider it to be, you know, responsive to the growth plan, it would need to be less than that 25% mix. And perhaps, you know, we can make it, add it to a recommendation, or they can take it up with the council. But I think that that should be considered to get them closer to what the desire is inside the 2045 plan. Thank you.
So, just to make sure I'm clear for the whole board, the issue with is the ratio of townhomes to single-family. Being approximately 40% townhomes. Okay, so...
I think it would be of a condition of approval in the event that this board moves in that direction to require that the mix of single-family and townhomes include less than 25% of the total development being townhomes to be consistent with the 2045 growth plan. And they're giving us a thumbs up from the...
So, if we could, it appears, it appears on the spot that that could be a condition in your motion of a recommendation to reduce the townhomes to 25% as a condition of approval.
And perhaps the applicant can talk more of what that would look like for the overall density of the project in order to maintain that it remains under 3% of the, or, excuse me, three dwelling units per acre, and then how that mix would be accomplished in order to stay under the 25% total townhomes, if that makes sense.
Yes, so we're willing to bring that down to 25% townhomes. To make the density up, some of those would be turned into single-family detached. And there are some townhomes that are quite close to Hidden Valley. We would eliminate those to pull those away from that property lines more to give more space right there. But we're willing to condition that in tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We need to send you to the federal government, don't you, this writer strike?
I mean, if there's continued discussion amongst the board, but I think as we think about how do we accomplish the needs of the community we use the plans that are before us, we have an obligation to allow property owners to develop how they see fit, so long as it fits our plan and that this board believes that three dwelling units. And perhaps we could ask the applicant to reduce the overall density of the development to coincide with, you know, compared land use plans in the county. But I think that getting them closer to what the town would require is important for us to consider as we move forward.
I have a question for Mr. Jacobs. If we, if the board moves towards the suggestion by Board Member Applewhite, which was agreeable by the applicant of reducing the townhomes to around 25%, no more than 25%, and the 3.0 density, if there is a recommend, a motion to recommend, what about this statement of inconsistency and reasonableness? Would it be still applicable?
If the overall density of the site was three dwelling units or per acre or less, and the 25% was accommodated, the four inconsistencies would no longer be inconsistent with the land use plan.
Right. Thank you.
With the assumption that this area would be low-density residential. Because this property is excluded because it's outside of our extraterritorial jurisdiction.
All righty. Thank you. Mr. Applewhite, do I hear a motion exclusive with the density of 3.0 units per acre and no more than 25% of the units being townhomes in a motion to recommend?
One thing that I would like to bring up is right now, this land's got, as Ms. Hackler said, 1.45 units of density per acre, as far as the reality of the zoning that they currently live under. So, my issue, and I've been here a long time, so I might know some stuff to other people. Not mine I know, but before we started doing stormwater measures everywhere, this area, and you can still see it, is on a water supply watershed maximum of two units of density per acre. So, that's why, when I've been sitting up here looking at it, I'm like, all these other developments have more than likely come in and complied with that water supply watershed maximum of two units of density per acre. I know Glen Laurel did, and I'm assuming that most everything else that was done in the county or Wilkes's Mills has done that also. So, that's, that's my biggest thing is, you know, how are we doing? And really and truly, I'm up here and I'm ETJ board member, you know, so I'm kind of supposed to be up here, you know, talking about ETJ, you know, things. And these guys aren't even in the ETJ. And I'm just trying to rationalize the 1.45 is what they've got now. Staff is saying three, you know, from the low-density residential. But if you look at the reality, the situation, the area is two. Glen Laurel is two, you know, if we'd looked at it and said, we'd have been that specific and said, how many units of density are in Glen Laurel, we'd come up with two. So, then would that have done, then guaranteed that this land had been in the rural residential category of two recommendations instead of three? I'm just trying to state what I think is fair.
And also, I'm concerned with the traffic and the safety, right? So, I want to make sure in our motion that we have some kind of study for both of the developments that we know are going to be going on in the next, you know, few years to make sure that the roads are ready, you know, safety and everything else. So, I'm just not comfortable with passing this until we have something else on the table.
I'd also like to say, I agree with Board Member Lipscomb in that, for me, it's a bigger picture as well. I think that we do, we are accommodating the growth here, and there's a lot of building and developing going on currently. So, I think we are doing that for the 2045 growth plan, but I think that, for me, it's a bigger picture. I agree with the traffic, the fact that we are a little ahead of the game in that we need to prepare a little bit better with schools.
I'm also an ETJ board member, and I just want to say that I hear you. And I've been right where you are just a few months ago, so I understand.
Chairman Morris. Thank you. If I could make one comment just about the general proceedings here. It's really meant to be more of a courtroom setting and a legislative hearing here, not so much an assembly. And we do have board members who are unable to finish their sentences at this time. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. And one of the things I do want to make sure that the board is, we are the Town of Clayton Planning Board. Schools are funded by Johnson County. We have no impact on the funding of schools. Whether you wait one day or 20 years, we have no authority over the Johnson County School Board or the Johnson County Commissioners and their funding of the schools. So, making those statements, I think, are not fair assessment. I don't think we need to, sir, we're through with public comments.
I don't say anything unrecognized.
The developer would consider tabling this when we address concerns, if I can speak that, so... Excuse me. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The developer would like to consider tabling this and trying to address these concerns because it's, what happens, this turned into a neighborhood meeting tonight. And we had two with nobody showing up. But in any case, we were trying to do that, and we could address any of y'all's concerns. And we do agree that, you know, we, it's not even legal to, we can't, we can't control schools. School Board does that. We can't control DOT. But we can try to address the concerns within this particular project while at the same time respecting somebody's ownership rights. So, if you want us to continue this 30 days or whatever, we will be glad to sit down and listen to everything we've heard tonight and see what we could do on site, okay? Now, it's, we can't do schools because we don't have that legal authority, and we can't do DOT because we don't have that legal authority. We can look at on-site, okay, and hopefully get a plan. And, you know, completely comparing this to a 1990 subdivision in Glen Laurel or another one that was a subdivision that would meet most modern standards at anything is a little problematic. This is obviously going to be a growth area, but let's try to make this project as friendly as it can be as a project on-site and recognize the fact that, I'm sorry, this is not a metal township. And, you know, this is not going to be the county condemning land so cows can live there. It's got to be a systematic development that meets the on-site conditions, which we would like to try to do, that meets the density plan, which we would like to try to do. I have several lawyers in my firm, young lawyers who've passed the bar. It's hard for a lawyer to buy a house at these prices. So, for some of these things, we've got to understand. If we don't put some density in, you're not going to see 20-year-olds here. And you don't, you're not going to see 25-year-olds or 30-year-olds. They really cannot afford the houses. And so, give us a chance to plan that, hopefully to meet this fairly new plan that y'all have put in. And we will try to address that well and come back with you in 30 days or 60 days, come back to you quickly and hopefully have some of these concerns addressed so that some of these... so that some of these people feel that, that we are good neighbors, okay? And I'm not promising that we're going to be the school board, we're going to be DOT, or that we're going to condemn our property for cows, but I am saying that we'll try to address every concern they have.
Well, sir, thank you. I might have to ask staff, do we table it or do we withdraw it since it's already been presented, that we've already had the public comments? What would be your recommendation?
As a lawyer, I'm just trying to help. I'll shut up if you want to. The Institute of Government suggests that you table it to a time certain, whether it be 30 days or 60 days, and this is a legislative hearing, so, you know, you're not bound to rule on it, okay? And I have had one in front of the county commissioners for the last meeting, you know, that was continued for almost a year because of sewer issues, and, but it was a zoning here, Shenandoah Homes zoning here in Cleveland Township. And so, you know, it can be continued, and we continued there and tried to negotiate and get something to work, and we did. We had more problems there because we had to wait for sources.
Do we in the audience respond?
No, sir. Public comments are over, sir.
Why was it--
Sir, 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 public, sir, sir, public comments are over, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I was the applicant, I think it's reasonable the applicant has requested it to be tabled. I think we should honor that request, but I also want to go on record as saying that, in my opinion, I disagree with staff saying that this is 3 units an acre is what it would have been, because right now it is 1.45 or 1.5 units per acre as far as the county. And I think the biggest issue with me is the townhomes. I'm struggling to find a town. I think the town's about 5 miles away, and I think the single-family, if you'd come up here tonight and you'd requested 2 units of density, I think I'd be voting yes for this, but townhomes are what I have my complete issue with. And that's my statement. But I do make a motion that we table this at applicant's request for 30 days.
We have a motion by Board Member Lipscomb to table this. You think 30 days would be sufficient, or you want to make it 60?
Mr. Spence, are you asking 30 or 60 days?
Sometimes things come up, you know, to continue one month. I'm not saying--
Excuse me, I just have one request, because we've got a lot of people out here, and I know they'll probably be coming back. And I really don't want, you know, you guys to call the day off and say, we want to continue this, and all these people have to come back up here. So that's the only, the only thing that I would caution about.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to request that the planning board provide some specific ideas or suggestions for staff to work with the applicant on through this 30-day period so that we can make sure that we're bringing a project that you would like to see or to the best of that ability.
Okay.
I think I've stated in my case that I don't know what other council or other planning board members think.
I think we have a motion by Board Member Lipscomb to table item 2022-195-CZM Vincent Rowe conditional rezoning with master plan for 30 days. I think the conditions were to make it as offered by the applicant of at least 30, I mean 3.0 units per acre. Also, I believe the applicant was amenable to reducing the townhomes to no more than 25% of the homes on the property. Are there any other--
Study done for traffic?
Further study on the traffic, TIA?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I think I captured, I'm just summarizing the motion. Y'all don't mean, is that your motion? But I did summarize.
Yeah, I'll accept that.
Okay. So, did you capture that?
So I guess let me summarize the, so I have, because I got--
Tabled for 30 days.
I wrote down what Mr. Lipscomb said originally, and that differed from what you said. So I took that you want to see at least, no greater than 3.0 dwelling units per acre, removing or reducing the townhomes to no greater than 25%, and further study on the traffic impact analysis. And I would ask for a little bit of better elaboration on what you're specifically asking for with that.
Personally, I'm not saying that I will accept any townhomes. I'm saying that that's what the applicant has said that they would, they would agree to, that I'm, that's where my big rub comes in, is, you know, the fact that this land is rural Johnston County right now, and it's 1.45 units of density per acre as a use par right, you know, that's what they got right now. So for us to come up and arbitrarily throw 3 on there when that's never been told is what I've got to hang up with.
It's fine, but, you know, a little further down, Flowers Plantation is Johnston County also.
Flowers Plantation has got a gross density of 2 units per acre.
But it has plenty of townhomes.
Heard there, but it's gross density over their entire acreage.
What I'm saying, over the entire acreage.
I agree, I agree.
But there are some satellite sites that are a lot more dense than that.
I agree.
Okay.
It's also part of the master plan, so--
No. So we got, we got a motion by Mr. Lipscomb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Powers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
No.
No, we have one no by--
No.
Have a no by Board Member Lee and Board Member Bagley on the tabling. Motion passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is 5B, Codify Clayton Unified Development Ordinance. We're going to take a recess for 5 minutes, thank you.[1055.53]
It's called a meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is codify Clayton Unified Development Ordinance. We are now here from staff.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Planning Board Members. Jonathan Jacobs, the interim planning director and assistant engineering director. I'm pleased tonight to present to you the public draft of the newly proposed Codify Clayton Unified Development Ordinance. Kind of a brief history, as most of you were on the steering committee, or if not all of you, I'm sure you are privy to all of this, but I want to do it just for the record. But following the adoption of the 2045 growth plan in the late 2021, council gave staff the go-ahead to proceed with a comprehensive update of the Unified Development Code, which was currently adopted in 2005, or the meat of it was adopted in 2005, with minor updates throughout the year, but the first kind of major overhaul in over 18 years. Through an RFQ process, the town chose code right planners, or specifically Chad Meadows, to create this for us over the last 18 months. And as noted, the public draft was posted on September 11th of this month. The public draft comes after 13 steering committee meetings, several development stakeholder interviews, three public forums, and extensive staff review. So I'm pleased to present Chad Meadows. He's going to go through quite a bit more detail, but just wanted to highlight the overall project.
Thank you, Jonathan. Mr. Chair, Mr. Members, how you guys doing? I know that it's been a long night so far, so we will try to move this along. And as always, if you have any questions, please absolutely feel free to stop me, and we can take questions. I've structured this presentation to kind of have the long version or the short version. And I'm thinking after the last hearing, you might want to go for the short version. We'll see when the time comes, okay? So with that, I'm going to attempt to use your technology here. How do I... Oh, there it goes. Okay. All right, so as Jonathan mentioned, we've been working on this for about 18 months, and I know that you guys are very well aware of it because we've been working on it together. The vast majority of you have been involved in the steering committee's work on this project, so you're very familiar with this material. And most of my comments tonight are simply going to be a refresher for you. Hopefully, I've packaged it in a way that's at least entertaining for you, so you won't have to hear it again. This is a quick slide of our work program, our scope of work and schedule. I'm not going to go over this. I'll just mention that, you know, we've had, you know, seven steps in this process. We're pretty much through one through four. We're in the middle of task five. I'll talk more about the testing task in a moment. And this is task six, or at least part of task six, adoption. It's our hope tonight, my hope, staff's hope, that planning board will be able to make a recommendation on the document this evening. We are anticipating adoption by the town council in October, though it may take them a little bit longer, and that's normal and quite all right. Delivery of the document, task seven, will happen after adoption. I wanted to be sure that you understood that regardless of the adoption date, we suggest, and I believe staff is on board with, the notion of a delayed effective date. So we're making a distinction between an adoption date and an effective date, okay? The reason for the delay is to do three things. One, allow us to finish the procedures manual. Two, adjust any application forms that need to be adjusted. Three, train the staff. So there's a little bit of a lag between adoption and effective date. That also is very normal, very typical, and smart. It gives your staff the ability to get comfortable with the document before they have to start administering it on a daily basis. At this point, if town council opts to adopt a document in October or November of this year, we would suggest an effective date of January 1st, 2024. Okay? Just to kind of make the math easy for everybody to keep track. I will also mention that in the interim, between adoption and effective date, the staff would give any applicant the ability to choose, to go forward under the current regulation or the new UDO at their request. Okay? So that's just another thing to kind of factor in and take on board. Just as a refresher, you know, we didn't jump right into drafting this project. As Jonathan mentioned, we've spent the last 18 months working on this. I know you guys know that. We did a diagnosis first. The diagnosis was really the roadmap for the project. It was the comp plan review. It was the summary of the stakeholder meetings, and it made seven recommendations. And you're familiar with those, things like making the regulations user-friendly and implementing the policy guidance, and raising the bar for development quality, and creating more housing options, et cetera. You've heard this all before. Just making sure that you guys remember that we didn't just jump in and start drafting this thing. It's been a careful, deliberate process. Deliberate with you, deliberate with staff, deliberate with the elected officials, deliberate with the public. Okay? In order to make sure that the public engagement was as good as it can be, because let's face it, it's not the most entertaining material to spend time talking about. We try to make it simple. We try to encourage people to participate. One of the ways that we did that was to prepare a webpage for the project, which has been ongoing for the last 18 months. I'm sure you guys have been there several times. It is still up and will be up for this foreseeable future. We had 10 stakeholder meetings that we conducted in April and May of 2022. We put together a brochure for the 2022 Harvest Festival. We had weekly project meetings with planning staff for the last 18 months. Weekly planning meetings, so we've been in pretty much constant contact. I'm going to say we met every single week, but darn close to it. Numerous, numerous committee meetings with the steering committee. As you know, you guys were a part of those from May 22 to August 23. The three public forums that we conducted, there have been two meetings with town council at various stages in the process. We've also had a couple of meetings with the development community on testing. So lots of engagement, a lot more engagement than you might find in a typical UDO project, where there's a couple of meetings in the beginning and then the public hearing process. So we've really tried hard to make this information accessible and be available for folks to share their thoughts and share them they have. Just a little PTSD for you there. Lot of meetings. Talk about project goals. Again, a methodical process, lot of input. We've incorporated that input wherever we could. I'm not going to say that we've incorporated everything or that we've addressed everybody's concerns 100%, and you guys understand that. That's the reality of finding balance. And we've tried to find balance in the outcome, based on the input that we've received, to stay true to their contract that we've got, to meet the project goals and best practices. And as I do every time we get together, the project goals... Have you got your tattoo of the project goals yet? Just kidding. Seven project goals. They have not changed. They've been consistent throughout the project. User-friendly, predictable, comp plan, development quality, wider range of housing choices, employment uses, fostering downtown development, protect community character. That was the marching order, okay? And that's been, you know, our north star as we've worked through the project. So how did we line up with our north star? In what ways? So five key changes, okay? There's five key changes between the UDC, your Unified Development Code, what you have today, and the draft UDO that is before you tonight for consideration. All right? And I'm going to talk about each one of these five changed areas. Hopefully, not in more detail than you can stand, but I will attempt to move through it quickly. First is usability, okay? Make the code user-friendly, make it usable, make it predictable. How did we do that? Well, went from 13 chapters to nine. The chapters are alphabetically sequenced. We use chapter names that are intuitive. All of the key sections in the document are also in alphabetical sequence, so all you need to do to be able to navigate the document is know the alphabet. We have a new page layout. We have new bookmarks. We have a new numbering sequence. Charts, graphics, illustrations are throughout the document. There's several hundred images in this document. We've incorporated navigational aids, you know, detailed headers, cross-references. There's a table of contents for every chapter. The document has a frequently asked questions section. There's a glossary of abbreviations. There's an index at the back that'll be completed upon adoption. We really strive to have numbered statements instead of prose and paragraph-structured language that people have to unwind to understand. And we really do hope that these changes make the UDO more usable, more user-friendly. For, as best we can tell, believe the development community is in agreement that this document is in fact easier to use. That's what we've heard thus far. Hopefully, that kind of information will continue. But from what we've been able to tell, document is easier to use. I'll lastly mention, you know, staff is trying something new with this document. In the past, the town has used a codification firm to keep the document. That's expensive. It's time-consuming. If the town opts to, and I believe is going to maintain the document itself, you're going to have much faster turnaround on your amendments, and it'll be much less expensive. We've structured the ordinance so that staff can self-codify this document with off-the-shelf software that they already own and already know how to use. Okay? So big step forward, quantum leap forward for Clayton in these kinds of simple usability aspects of the document, okay? Flexibility, another big change. We've tried to weave flexibility into the procedures, into the development standards, and also in a variety of incentives that reward or encourage desired forms of development. Okay? So we have administrative adjustments, where staff can make these kinds of very minor changes to dimensional requirements or other numeric provisions administratively. The three-tiered conditional zoning system that gives people an option to just change or limit their uses, or modify just the standards, or have a more negotiated kind of a project like the one you saw before my presentation this evening. The five new conditional districts, right? The residential, the commercial, the downtown, et cetera. A comprehensive fee-in-lu approach, not just for one thing or two things, but rather a generic fee-in-lu approach that works for everything, that anybody wants to propose or suggest a fee-in-lu about. A vested rights certificate process that allows site-specific vesting plans a longer vesting term than the simple two years that's guaranteed under the statutes. We've got a conservation subdivision option for developments that incorporate sewer and will agree to maintain 40% or more of the space as open space. They can have reduced setbacks. They can avail themselves of higher development potentials, okay? So that's an incentive and an option to try to protect environmentally sensitive areas. We've incorporated a menu-based approach to the design standards. The non-residential and mixed-use design standards have menus, so that an applicant isn't boxed in and told you will do this, and you'll do that, and you'll do the other, but rather they get a choice, which helps bring them into, you know, the process. There are alternatives for parking, for landscaping, and for signs, okay? So you can deviate from what's in the standards based on good reasons, and staff can assist and make those decisions. So that's an important part of being modern and flexible. There's three different kinds of open space. There's passive, there's active, there's gathering, okay? So you've got a variety of different ways that you can meet the open space standards. There's a whole suite of sustainability incentives that gives you additional height, additional density, larger signs, reduced parking standards, all for you agreeing to do the right thing, to have better stormwater, to protect the environment, to protect, you know, animals and have energy conservation, or whatever. Affordable housing, whatever it might be. We've incorporated density bonuses for design quality for single-family residential development, okay? We're not allowed to regulate design quality for single-family anymore, except through things like incentives or conditional zoning. We've incorporated these design guidelines as a means for applicants to have something to look at and start with when they come to you, to talk about what does design quality mean? Because let me tell you, it's a lot more than just 25% of the facade's going to have masonry on it, okay? Way more to it than that. Give people some things to look at, some things to think about, and open a discussion about what design quality means, not just materials. There's more to it. Finally, a flexible approach to tree protection. We've incorporated some standards that say, hey, if you want to save trees, that's great. 15% of your site you need to save. If you need to cut down the trees, okay, that's not great. We don't love it, but there is an option for you to do that. If you choose to do that, you're going to put back more than 15% of the tree cover that was in place when you started. So, you know, you can pick your poison. You can choose which way to go. That theme, that flexibility, is something that we've woven through the document. We're trying to create opportunities for designers to design, for staff to administer, and for you guys to do the planning work that you need to be doing, because I hear there's a lot of traffic problems and water quality issues here in town. So you guys have stuff to do. Precision. The hallmark of a good development code is precision, right? Measurable review criteria. Every single one of your 31 processes has a set of review criteria that are set down. Now, not all of them are measurable. Legislative things like rezoning depend on open-ended, or squidgy, if you will, kinds of approval criteria, but by and large, most permits have very clear approval criteria that are numerically based, or at least are measurable. Can I measure how well this development complies with the standards? We standardized the application process language, okay? Each application procedure has a purpose, an intent statement, applicability, exemptions, the process, the review criteria, how you amend it, how it expires, how the vesting works, et cetera. Consistent procedure across procedure, okay? Rules of measurement. There are multiple pages of how we determine things like setback, lot size, lot side, and all of the development standards, parking, landscaping size, signage, building height, et cetera. So very detailed rules of measurement supplemented with illustrations, again, so that everything is predictable and precise. We make 10 different subdivision distinctions in this ordinance. While there are only five subdivision procedures, we recognize 10 different kinds of subdivisions, okay? There are family subdivisions, and recombinations, and exempt subdivisions, and limited subdivisions, and a whole mess of others, okay? All of that information is set down for you in this ordinance. There's a three-tiered use classification system, okay? Use classifications, use categories, and use types. That's done for a couple of reasons. One, it allows you to easily classify unlisted uses. The other is it's consistent with North Carolina Court of Appeals rulings about how we can no longer say that an unlisted use is prohibited, okay? So we have to be more clear. The violations and remedies for violation of the UDO, including some of the new environmental provisions that we've incorporated, are also set down here. So it's very clear about what is a violation and what are the remedies that are available to the town to address that violation. So all of that level of precision is there. I'll also mention, we've really tried to use plain English, not jargon, you know, being very precise in our use of terms and terminology wherever we could, and mostly because precision leads to predictability. If you and I can agree on what it says, then we can set aside half of the debate and focus on the substance of the language, rather than our interpretation of what it means. Comprehensiveness. Yes, the document is long. I am in agreement with you. It is a long document. At the same time, it includes a lot of stuff, right? We've relocated the flood protection. We've relocated the stormwater, the riparian buffer, and the stormwater rules from the city code. Those chapters in your city code have now moved over into your UDO, along with their procedures and their definitions. We've overhauled your water supply watershed rules and brought them into alignment with the current state model, okay? So that was a big change. The 31 application review procedures that we've added, 14 of which are brand-new. The 10 new zoning districts, including the rural, the multifamily, the mixed-use, the conservation, the five conditional districts, and the changes that we made to downtown. You've got 150 principal uses that are identified in this use table, plus standards for secondary and temporary uses. So a very, very comprehensive set of use provisions that you guys can rely on to consider applications. Five sets of non-conforming provisions, uses, structures, lots, signs, sites. 98 pages of definitions, which is a lot. It's a lot of definitions, but if having a definition there stops you guys from losing a lawsuit, or helps somebody understand what the code says, then it was worth it, right? Legal sufficiency. This is a foundational goal for the UDO. The one thing we don't want is to wind up in court, okay? Because that gets expensive. How have we addressed legal sufficiency? We've included purpose and intent statements for the ordinance itself, okay, in chapter one. We've got purpose and intent statements for every procedure, every district, every development standard. We had the following intentions in the preparation of these standards. The courts will look to those purpose and intent statements as to the reasons why the code says what it says, okay? It's a very important thing to include. There are four or five pages on vested rights, how they're established, how they're modified, and how they terminate. There's a detailed appeal procedure, okay, for decisions that are appealed by this body, decisions that are appealed by, you know, the board of adjustment, decisions that are appealed by staff. We cover all of those things, along with original civil actions. There's a determination procedure, five different kinds of determinations that can be made, right? What's allowed on my property? What do these conditions mean? What is my vesting status? How is this used defined? And several others. There's a determination procedure that anybody can come and pay to get a written answer that is appealable to the board of adjustment, and then ultimately Superior Court for Johnston County. Evidentiary procedure rules. How does the board of adjustment handle and process its hearings and its rules of evidence in those hearings? So that's set down. There's a set of transitional provisions. We don't just stop the clock. You guys are still receiving applications today, right? Stuff is still going on now. How will we handle these applications that are in some stage of review but not yet decided, or have been decided and started to construct but are not yet finished when the new ordinance comes into play? The transitional provisions address those kinds of questions. Content neutral signage. The Supreme Court a few years ago decided that every local government in the land will have content-neutral sign rules, and that has had some serious ramifications for everybody, including Clayton. Your telecommunications standards are now up to date. We address, you know, eligible facility requests. We address substantial modifications. We address small wireless facilities. So all of those things are now covered. You are current. There are identified prohibited uses, not just prohibited in this district or that district, but prohibited throughout the jurisdiction, or in a particular overlay district, okay? New review authority requirements, rules of procedure, oath of office, conflict of interest, all of these things that came in 160D are now incorporated into your ordinance and are there for you guys. The enforcement process itself, how does the town physically handle the receipt of a complaint, the investigation of the complaint, the citation to the owner, and how is that citation addressed? Is all set down in the enforcement, the violations chapter for you. Finally, the appendix includes plan requirements, plat requirements, certification and declaration statements. So there's a lot more detail for applicants about how to prepare applications and how to get through this process. And so these are the big five changes, okay? Usability, flexibility, precision, comprehensiveness, and legal sufficiency. Those were the big changes that we wanted to bring, you know, to the document. Now, that's the end of the short form of the presentation. We can stop there, or I'd be happy to go through in more detail the other nine chapters of the ordinance. So I'll take my cue from you guys. You know I can talk fast, so I'll leave it up to you to tell me if you want to go talk about testing now, or if you just want to have questions, or if you'd like to hear some more about the content and the changes in the chapters.
Okay, guys. Y'all know I'm going to state my feelings here. So I really appreciate everything I've learned from you already. I think this is going to be a great document. The one thing that scares me is the unknown. And I'm sitting here looking at a residential multifamily district, and is this going to be a district that somebody can come in and say, we want to rezon this? Or do we actually have a map that I haven't seen that actually puts this on the ground proactively? There's so many things, in my opinion, that I don't understand. You know, that's just me as one person. You know, that's just me as one person. Um, but I am also looking at this because some of this stuff, you know, I may have to implement in the future. So I'm trying to look at it deeper than, you know, just, um, on the surface. And so more detail to me is better. I know I, um, board member Applewhite, you know, was like, no, sometime we got to make a decision at some point, you know what I mean? So I think that he was kind of like, you know, let's, uh, and I'm not putting words into his mouth, but you know, let's get this thing adopted and tested.
Right.
But then with me, you know, looking at previous councils, not to pigeonhole this council, you know, is that this thing's going to be tested on day one, you know, whoever's sitting with Jonathan's over at right now is, it's going to be tested. And we're going to need to fix any inconsistencies or anything. And we need, we need to do it immediately because I know over the past few years, it's been, let's wait until we get a new U D O done. Let's wait until we get a new U D O done. And I think that, you know, council members, um, which I know everybody's got at least two years of experience now, you know what I mean? I think that you're going to be seeing constant, monthly, or potentially you're going to be seeing constant monthly conversations held at a council level to say, is that what we intended to do? Because it's eight hundred and forty-seven pages. And even if you gave me another month, I'm not saying that I won't be able to understand all eight hundred and forty-seven pages. So that, that's my concern, but I know I'm one person on a board that is an advisory board to another board. I do a hundred thousand percent agree that we need to have that sixty to ninety days at a minimum timeframe between adoption and implementation. Um, so that, that's where I'm at. I'm not negative. I, I do want to say, and, and I swear to you, he has not paid me a dime. He has not paid me a dime. But I know that several times it has been said, and I think it's mostly been said by you, is that my contract has this many hours in it. And especially with a new director coming in, I think it's going to be critically, critically important that there is not a sense of, oh, I've only got Chad for thirty minutes this month. I can't go and use him. Because I think that part of the long-term value, you know what I mean, in this whole process is having access to your brain, especially now that we are having two transitions, you know, a new director and a new code and, you know, whoever comes in, unless Jonathan says he wants to take the job, is going to be like, hey, I did this for the first time today. I don't know if I like it or not, you know? So part of me was like, you know, do we let, do, do we recommend, say, let's get a new director and then let him review this before we do it? But then that could be putting months, quarter or six months onto it. So, so I'm, I'm conflicted, but I'm, I'm just being honest and opening my heart, saying, you know, there's a lot of things in here I think are great. There's a lot of things in here that kind of scare me. But when they get tested, it's going to be up to the council, you know, to make a quick decision for to fix it and go into a code, um, adjustment.
I, I don't want to speak out of turn if other people have questions, but I, I have a lot, that's a lot to respond to. Um, and if you permit me to tell you a story, I will do that. Um, and here it is. Um, I agree with you a hundred percent. There is absolutely going to be the next twelve to twenty-four months that this community goes in and amends this ordinance frequently. I have been the continuing services planner for Burlington, a community of fifty thousand people, um, where I rewrote their zoning ordinance. I've been their continuing services contractor for three years. We have made thirteen amendments to that development code since its adoption back in twenty nineteen. And that's very normal and it's been very helpful. And one thing that I didn't mention before is there was a major change in the political makeup of their elected officials after that document was finished, okay? And there was a desire on the part of some council members to toss it out. Ah, this document's too hard. It's too complicated. We don't understand. Let's just go back to our old one. Um, they didn't do that. They ended up working with staff, working with me and revising the regulation, all right? Which is normal and typical. Whoever told you that once you wrote the U D O, you're done, you'll never touch it again, was lying to you. The, the General Assembly has, is going to see to it that you are revising this document at least once a year, every year, okay? So gone are the days where you can set it and forget it. That's not how life is anymore. You're always going to be in here tweaking this regulation. You're always going to be learning. Your staff is always going to be learning. Frankly, um, I'm always learning. Uh, in fact, the opportunity to learn is one of the reasons why I do this job. I could be charging six or seven or eight hundred dollars an hour like other attorneys in the room earlier. I don't do that. I work for a lot less. And the reason why I work for a lot less is because I care about the learning. And what you guys have to teach me, when you get this ordinance and you start working with it and the issues and challenges and unintended consequences are revealed to all of us, then we will change this document and it will work better. And you will learn and I will learn and I'll be thankful for that. And that's part of the bargain. So thirty minutes this week? No, that's not me. Um, ask my counterparts in Burlington if I'm there for thirty minutes a month for them. Um, the, you'll, I think you'll find that this continuing services work and my ability to stick with you guys after you adopt this is the reason I do this job, because that's where I learn what works and what doesn't. And you guys are beneficiaries of that three years of work, just like the people who come after you are going to benefit from our time together. And the code that they enjoy will have addressed all of the problems that you guys have yet to find. And I know that's not much of a consolation for you, but all I can say is this. We planned for that. We knew that that was going to be the case. Absolutely positively, there's going to be revisions to your ordinance. That's perfectly legitimate. It's perfectly normal. And frankly, it's desirable. You want the ordinance to be able to change. I would anticipate you changing it quarterly. You may decide you want to change it more frequently than that. And if that's the case, and if you decide that you want me here, then I'll be right here beside you, sharing with you my thoughts and my ideas and what worked somewhere else, because that's what we do together. Um, I know, I know, Mr. Lipscomb, that you've sat in on these meetings and you've raised objections and you've made suggestions about things that we should take out of the ordinance. And we've done that. We've responded to that. Take a look at the reserve fund for property owners associations. Take a look at the lighting provisions, the, the, um, turning off the street lights after closure. Um, changes to density, changes to, uh, lot size when water and sewer is not available. All of those comments we have responded to, and I think you'll find that as we go forward, we'll, our, our spirit of cooperation will continue, uh, and that the ordinance will get better. And, you know, it'll make you happy and you proud, and it'll make me happy and me proud. Because I know that the ordinance that results from that is going to be better than what we've got on the table today. Now, having said that, even if you have problems or concerns with fifteen percent or twenty percent of this ordinance, there's still a seventy-five or eighty percent of this ordinance that's great. And you'd be crazy not to let that move forward with concerns over these smaller parts that everybody agrees are going to be modified, that everybody agrees are going to be tested. His staff is going to be looking at this document with a fine-tooth comb every day, just like they do in Burlington. I have ten or fifteen teachers who call me up every day to tell me where I missed this issue or how this is, uh, interpreted. That will happen here too. And if you, if you don't adopt this ordinance, if you choose to let it sit, then that process can't start. And you're just going to be delaying this inevitable thing. So I really do encourage you guys. I understand that there's some areas where you're like, gosh, I don't know. This is different. It's new. I don't know how I feel about it. That's natural. And, you know, some of that stuff is going to work great. Some of it might not work so great, but, you know, you just change it. You make some revisions. As to your question at, at the head of the conversation about what are we doing with this multifamily district? That is not intended to be laid down on the ground upfront, that it's intended to be made available for people to request. Much like the mixed use, much like the majority of the, of the downtown, the, the transitional and the neighborhood are simply made available. Now, six months from now, you guys might say, hey, you know what? We want to lay these things on the ground. Okay. You know, if that's something that you guys want to do, then there's a process for that.
One other question. I know we had at least three members from the Board of Adjustment. Is the Board of Adjustment, are they getting a presentation too, or should we have asked them to be here tonight? Because I know I've talked to Marty and Jim, and they had some similar concerns to mine. And I think that what I'm going to do is look at this as just saying, I'm going to continually, you know, read because there's so much information there. And I'm getting ready to go on vacation later this week. So I'm not going to be able to spend a lot of time on it. Because I know that we're all busy on this board and we just can't, you know, take a week to read a thousand pages in total, eight forty-seven. But I, I think that with, what I'm going to look at this and I want to make sure I state this for everybody is that I'm going to be looking at stuff and I might bring up something next week. I'm going to say, hey, how about this? So I'm just wanting to make sure that, you know, even if I, you know, vote to recommend approval, that is still something that's a living, breathing document. So, so, so how about, um, how about the, the planning board members? Have y'all?
You mean the Board of Adjustment?
Excuse me, the Board of Adjustment members that were on the committee also.
I am taking my lead from staff on how often we meet or, or who we meet with.
Okay.
Um, I, I know that you know that my perspective on that question is this. I'll meet with anybody, anytime, anywhere, uh, because that's what makes for a better ordinance. Now, at some point, you do have to sort of say, look, we've met this thing to death, you know? And there's nothing else new that's going to come that we don't already know. Um, I think Jonathan mentioned we had thirteen meetings with the steering committee, Mr. Bazell, Mr. Pericon. Um, they were part of that. Um, I am happy to, to do what, what staff, what elected officials say we need to do. I would expect that the Board of Adjustment will be right in there in making suggestions to staff about what needs to change. Um, I will tell you that in, in my capacity as, as Board of Adjustment Chair in Durham where I live, I always talk to staff about, hey, you guys really need to fix this. I'm tired of having these cases on this issue or that issue. So I consider that to be part and parcel of, of being a chair of a body. I hope, you know, that the Board of Adjustment will, you know, take up that mantle here with this document. So I know that's not really a straight answer. The answer is if, 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 if the council wills it, then, you know, who am I to stand in the way? I do know they've had lots of opportunity to comment. I do know that every time I see an email or a comment from them, I'm going to take it seriously, um, just like I've done in the past. So, you know, I don't, I don't foresee, I don't see this as the end of the relationship. I see it as the beginning.
I appreciate what you're saying there.
I'd like to jump in and just respond. Um, so as Chad mentioned, um, the, the steering committee, which consisted of those three Board of Adjustment members, has met thirteen times. Um, staff feels like the intent of the steering committee has been met. We have reached a final public document. Uh, the steering committee is not intended to be a deciding or a determining party. Fortunately, in this case, we had our planning board members as a part of that. So at this time, unless the town council directs staff differently, we do not plan to have any additional steering committee meetings at this time. And I will also commit to you that, uh, staff also, uh, I will, I will echo everything Chad said about updating. Uh, I fully intend that we will be here at least every other month. Um, and then once we get to a point where that kind of fizzles out, um, the, the U D O will be on a, a maintenance cycle more to how we intend to do our engineering specifications when they're, uh, completed at the end of this year. Uh, every six months to, six months to, every six months to a year, we will, we will do a comprehensive internal um, overview of, of things that have come up through the, through that time period and keeping really a running list. And those will be really determined on severity, you know? Uh, this year I, I looked, we've, we've done four ordinance amendments to our land use code this year in twenty twenty-three. So it's a very normal process for, uh, even our current code as it is going out of date. Um, and to your point, yes, we have deferred a lot of this because a lot of the, uh, the changes that staff has wanted to make. And I'll, I'll point to Ben here. We've got him in the room to represent us. His part in this. Um, there's been a lot of things that staff has really wanted to change, but is it really worth the effort to modify significantly an existing code that we know is going to go away in six months or so? So there's, there's a balance there, um, but there's been some things that have come up. So I, I just wanted with all that to, to kind of commit from the staff level. And I've had this conversation with several of our council members that we fully intend to be uh, in front of council with, with multiple updates as, as you, as you mentioned with, when the real testing takes place. Because we can analyze five hypothetical plans all we want, but those may be five magical plans that don't outline, uh, massive flaws that we, we have not yet found in the code. I'm not anticipating that. I'm not, I'm just using that as an example. But fully intend to be back in front of this board and the town council for, for amendments, uh, over the next twelve, four, twenty-four months.
Thank you.
And I agree, Chad, as the planning board member attended all or ninety-five percent of the meetings for the planning board. Uh, this is not a, I don't think our intent is for this doc, document to be perfection. And the comments that I've heard two months ago, uh, it, from the Board of Adjustment members and from others is that it's a lot of information. We haven't had a chance, but that was two months ago. So if you were, the statements that I'm hearing now, the same statements I heard sixty days ago, and you still hadn't looked at it. So if I give you another sixty days, you're probably still not going to look at it because we're still going to have work obligations, vacations and other things going on. But I think our role is like the intent of the document, knowing like you stated, it's a living, breathing document. Council will constantly receive information from staff or from, from others, from the development community and make modifications. So our intent is saying it is a good document. I would love to see the testing phase. Now, we all know if we've worked in government or the private sector, major corporations, I can tell you every project I ever worked, every, every I T project, uh, that I was the project manager or part of the project team, we spent seven, eight figures on I T projects, get the testing. And when you implement it.
Problem next day.
Problem next day. But you spent millions of dollars on testing. And there's this phenomenon, if you, if you've ever read Colin Powers, uh, Chairman Power, Colin Powers, Leadership Principles, no plan survives contact with the enemy. That's something that I use in management and as executive in the law enforcement. No matter how beautiful the plan you have, the enemy or, and in, in government terms, the people that you deliver to customer doesn't respond to your plan. You can have the most beautiful idea that all the customers are going to go two rights and a left. What happens when they go two lefts and a right?
Right.
They're not responding. You have to improvise.
Right.
So I, and I appreciate that you brought that out to the board, that this is a living, breathing document. So I, I agree. The next thing for informational purposes for the board from my perspective is let's talk about the testing phase.
Okay.
And how, how are we implementing that? What developers or what companies or individuals you're using for the testing and how's that going?
Let, let my, let my technology catch up and I'll be happy to talk about that. Testing. Okay. So first off, testing is not a big thing, okay? And if you, if, if you go in out and you look at other U D O projects that are out there, there's not a lot of testing, okay? And, and that's unfortunate, but it is the way that it is. Most of the reason for that is because it's taken too long and everybody's so sick of it anyway. They're like, oh, my God, if I have to talk about the U D O anymore, I'm going to shoot myself or somebody else. So testing doesn't always happen. The town has always been committed to testing this document. Now, what we are doing with testing, and I think I've mentioned this before, but I'll go over it with you guys, um, again tonight. We, we took five approved plans. There are two residential subdivisions, two commercial sites and one industrial site that have been reviewed and approved by the town recently. And, and I'm sorry, I don't know exactly all of the years, but recently. So what we did was take those plans and give them to Timmons, okay? Timmons Group is a local plan preparer, civil firm, architect, engineer, landscape architect. In fact, they were part of the application for the, you know, your case prior tonight. Um, as a matter of fact, they're the engineer of record for the industrial site that we're testing. So they got to go through this process with the current U D C and then go through it again with the U D O. And that was beneficial. Um, so what they're doing is re-examining those prior approvals in light of the proposed U D O rules. And they're identifying areas for further refinement, okay? This testing project is not about, oh, you didn't put a period at the end of that sentence. Oh, that word should be this instead, or that T isn't crossed. The testing effort is designed to find fatal flaws in the development regulation. Here's something that's come up that we didn't anticipate. And let me give you a really good example of one that's already come up. And let me give you a really good example of one that's already come up, okay? As you know, in the mixed use district and the multifamily district, these two new zoning districts that we're proposing be incorporated in the UDO, we have set the maximum density at 12 units an acre. The very first meeting that we had with members of the development community, the very first thing they said was that 12 units an acre is not workable. It is too low. We cannot provide you the quality multifamily that you appear to want at that density. It is simply not workable for us from a profit standpoint. Very frank, very candid, and very much something for us to consider, okay? Now, is that a fatal flaw? I don't know. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But that's the kind of flavor of information that we're expecting from the testing project is here are some issues that we need to consider. What's going to come from all of this is a summary memorandum to the Town Council that says, here are the issues that we've heard. Here are the things that have come up thus far, based on discussions with the development community about the UDO and the testing work that's been done. I do not know what else has come from the development community. They have not provided that information yet, but I know they're working on it. And I know that, you know, they're working in good faith with us on making sure that the ordinance works for them, which is smart and appropriate. And, you know, hopefully that kind of cooperation will continue. That's where we are. We've had two discussions with the development community, one that was sort of general in nature about how the process will work, and one that we introduced the individual projects. We are now waiting for them to have enough time to review the testing proposals that are put together and the observations that Timmons has made. And I'll be honest with you, I'm paying Timmons to do this, but boy, they came out swinging. There were a lot of suggestions and modifications that Timmons made that I was like, whoa, wow, I'm surprised that you, that you made that. I'm glad that you made that, those comments, because I think it leads to a better ordinance. But it was certainly, you know, no kick gloves with me in terms of the issues and problems that they raise with, you know, the ordinance. Now, some of that was simply they didn't understand it, okay? Which is a bit surprising, but they didn't understand it. So we had to have some conversation, we had to have some learning, and we did that. And as a result of that, I think their positions changed about some things, okay? So I fully expect that to be the case with everybody who gets involved in the ordinance. You know, your staff and I didn't just fall off the turnip truck. We've been doing this for decades, and so we know how to do this. It's just that, you know, it takes a little bit of time to explain ourselves and have everybody kind of come up to the same level of understanding. The lumber of light bulbs that went off when we explained the conditional rezoning process to people in the room was remarkable. When they understood how the tiered conditional zoning process works, they're like, oh, well, okay, I don't have any problems with that then. And, you know, I mean, if I'm lying, I'm done. That's exactly what happened. So I would expect that to happen as we go through this process. We're not going to get very detailed, hyper intense comments. We're going to get generalized, I don't think this will work, or you need to investigate that, or this part of the issue is a problem. We'll report that to the elected officials. We'll make some suggestions about what could be done. That could be changes. It could be dropping the standards altogether. It could be making no change at all. And, you know, we'll, we'll toss that football over to you guys and let you decide what we're going to do with it. But that's how the testing process is working and will work. I know we're going to have at least one more meeting, maybe more. Again, if, if it is the will of the powers, then we'll have as many meetings as we need to. But our goal is to get the best set of recommendations from them, take it to the elected officials so that they can give us some feedback. And that's our hope.
The original goal was to have the testing completed prior to this date, but the members of the chamber selected to participate in the testing did not feel like the time they were provided was adequate. So we are following up on October 2nd, which is ahead of the next Town Council work session where the UDO will be discussed. And you asked for who was involved in that. We have representation from Withers Ravnell, CPDG Group, Kenny Properties, Craig Davis Properties, Lipscomb Development, and that's everybody that the chamber recommended. And staff, staff's a part of that process as well.
And Timmons just keeps hammering me. Here are some of the things that have come up thus far. I mentioned that we haven't had anything serious from the development community, but we have had some discussions and some things have come up. And here they are. And there's nothing groundbreaking here, but, you know, some minor changes to tree symbology so that it's clear, allowing a registered landscape architect to assist or prepare a reforestation plan. This is a great comment, specifying required open space formats, whether it was passive or active or gathering, or how those things differentiated from district to district. Great suggestion. I'm kicking myself because I didn't think of it, but yeah, you know, major improvement. There's a suggestion note that as drafted, the UDO does not recognize single car garages as credit towards off-street parking spaces. Development community said, hmm, I don't know how I feel about that. And so that was raised as a point. We'll be talking that over with the elected officials. And then the density question, which I mentioned earlier, that, you know, there was a suggestion that we really do need to explore the density caps that we've embedded. Those density caps came from the Comprehensive Growth Plan, okay? We didn't just pick the number out of the air. So that's a sampling of kind of what we, what we're hearing. We'll continue to hear stuff. I am very sorry that we don't have all of the information from them yet, and I know that we're asking you guys to trust us, but at the same time, I hope you can feel comfortable trusting us because, you know, we really do care about making the ordinance the best that it can be. And, you know, it's not like we're going to ignore somebody's input or not share that with the elected officials or just, you know, throw it in the trash can. That's not, that's not how we operate.
Can I give a counterargument to your testing on the parking credit for the one-car garage? I think Mr. Williams made reference to it earlier. If they don't have a additional parking pad, if it's just a, the parking garage with the 20-foot seatback, if without an additional parking pad, let's be honest, a two or three-car family, just for convenience, are not lining up the cars every morning, every night, hey, you got to move your car, I got to let you out, you got to move your car, I got to, that's not reality. They're parking on the street, they're parking elsewhere.
I understand.
So them throwing that in as a credit, I, I know, that's a facade.
It's the give and take. It's the, it's the yin and yang and the gestalt of the process. I raised it because that was something that came out of the meetings that we've had thus far.
But I just go right back to what he was just talking about a few minutes ago.
I think we have good reasons to not give credit towards a one-car garage, particularly on a single-family attached product. You know, like I said, we didn't just fall off the turnip truck. So, you know, I mean, I think there's some discussion, I think there's some consideration, and I think we try to find a creative solution. Maybe there's a way for us to give credit in something that we haven't thought about yet, but, you know, they're bringing stuff to our-
Put a parking pad, additional parking pad.
Maybe. Or there's guest parking, you know, in the community that's, you know, centrally located and off the street. That's another option that some communities use. So there's a lot of different ways that we can do this. Our goals are to have these conversations and to make adjustments, you know, in accordance with what council directs, of course. That's where we are with testing. We're very hopeful to have this done mid-October, very hopeful, and in time for the elected officials' consideration in mid-October.
And I'll also note, again, similar to the Steering Committee, the, the testing group is not intended to make any decisions or recommendations there, to provide feedback and for staff and council to, for staff to present that feedback to the Town Council for consideration.
Right. We would anticipate some adjustments to the language based on the discussion with council. We're not, you know, we're, we're not going to spend time and effort doing that until we've had the conversation. They may say, hey, we like it just like it is.
Okay. So, so more than likely, the final adoption-ready ordinance would be December, you think, or November?
I, it's, it's my sincere hope that we get this thing adopted on the 16th of October. That was, has always been our target. But, you know, the, the first casualty of war is the plan. And it may be that, you know, it takes a little bit of extra time for this to happen. And I just, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want you guys to worry that, you know, I'm just going to cut and run and, oh, I'm done, see y'all later, you know, via candias. That's not how we operate. So we'll be around, you know, until you don't need us anymore. And you say get the heck out. But hopefully this will be, you know, October. It might stretch to November. Ultimately, it's really in their hands, and we'll work to whatever, you know, deadline we need to meet to make them happy.
Thank you.
So next steps, you know, if there are other questions, if you guys would like to make a recommendation, that would be great. If you need more answers, happy to provide that. I think that we're thinking that Town Council consideration is in mid-October. A couple of things we haven't talked about that much, but that we still need to do even after the Town Council's consideration, is the preparation of a procedures manual. It's an outside document that gives you more detail on submittal schedules, submittal requirements, resources for applicants. It's not part of the UDO, it's a, it's a supplementary document, it's not adopted ordinance, it's a helper guide to the UDO. And then finally, some training, training for staff on how to maintain the document, perhaps some training for selected staff or even boards and commission members to understand some of the new pieces in the document. So with that, I will hand it over to, to Mr. Jacobs, and I will say thank you. I have really enjoyed working with you guys. You guys have given me a ton to think about, and I appreciate it. And I hope that we continue to, to work together in the coming days and weeks. Thank you.
All right. Before you go into your formal deliberation, I need to do my, my part of our recommendation and everything here tonight. Chad will still be available for questions if more come up. But as noted in the staff, staff report, there were three attachments in your packet, the track changes version. I want to note that the tracked changes, so the changes that are in red or in blue are deletions, are things that have been modified since the original drafts of those chapters. So that would account for anything modified either by staff or by the Steering Committee. The second document is a list of changes that we are proposing since the public draft has been made. Most of those are the ones that Chad mentioned have come from Timmons, as well as some minor grammatical things that have come up through further review. And then finally, the third attachment is our current Unified Development Code, the Flood Damage Prevention Code, Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control, as well as the Stormwater, which are Chapter 155, 151, 156, and 158 that we will ask council to also consider replacing when we request their action on this item. So tonight, staff is asking the Planning Board to approve the document with the proposed changes as outlined in the staff report. You have several options that you can participate as the, as the board. You can vote to approve the document with the proposed changes as is, you can propose to approve the document with recommended changes, or you can propose to not approve the document tonight.
I have one question. You mentioned the Timmons recommended changes. Is that included, such as the credit for the parking pad, I mean, the one-car garage?
The one-car garage was not a Timmons recommendation, that was from feedback that we received in our initial meeting. Timmons are all really just clarifying and formality type comments, nothing specific to modification of the document, if that makes sense.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I know that parking issue has been a longstanding issue for members of the Board of Adjustment and us about adequate parking, especially in townhouse communities. And when I saw that, giving them credit for the garage, that's just, is, is going to aggravate the situation, it's not going to alleviate it at all in future developments. So, thank you. So I guess you need a motion from a member of the board to either recommend or not recommend the codified Clayton Unified Development Ordinance to Town Council.
And I would also request that you include the list of changes that were in the second attachment of that document, which are not included in the track changes version. They're just a list, and that's how we will present that to council as well.
So the motion needs to stay, I just want to make sure for one of these members, the motion needs to stay what now?
The, the motion would be action in regard to the codified Clayton Unified Development Ordinance as presented with the proposed staff changes since 9/11/2023.
Did y'all capture that? Ready? Is there a motion to recommend or not recommend codified Clayton Unified Development Code with staff changes as of 9/11/22?
23.
9/11/23.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, do we have an opportunity to discuss further, just to make comments on the, on the UDO?
Yes.
Okay. One quick comment. I do think, and thank you Board Member Lutzman for, for mentioning it earlier, I do think it is, is time to pass it. I think that when we think about the opportunity that exists and there perhaps being some changes that will be coming forth from the real testing when folks get, get with this document and use it for development, but I also think there's opportunity of us not passing it. I think we could be missing out in the next few months of, of the quality developments that could, could come in using the ordinance. So I'll, I'll make the motion at the appropriate time if that, that time is, is now, unless there are other board members that-
Mr. Chair, if I could, we do have members from the public, so I would recommend that you allow them to have a moment. We will have a formal public hearing if, if the Planning Board does take action tonight.
I'm sorry. He was blocked by you and Chad. Is there a member of the public like to speak on this, on the Unified Development Ordinance?
I know these chairs are not as soft as they were a little, a few hours ago, so I'll make this brief. As Mr. Williams said earlier, y'all are all volunteers. I do want to say that I appreciate you being here, taking your time, waiting for your families to, to do what you do. I missed ballgame, one of my grandson's ballgames tonight myself, and I know y'all do that more on a regular basis than just tonight. In a different capacity, I serve currently as Chairman of the Consumer and Family Advisory Committee for Johnston County with Alliance Health. We are tasked with finding out what the needs are in the community and passing those along to Alliance Health who manages the Medicare dollars coming into the county and into the state. We're one of six managed care organizations that are tasked in doing this. Just wanted to say, one in four people sometime in their lifetime have a mental health crisis. One in four. And right now, as you know, housing is one of the biggest issues there are, just in the general public, but also in the mental health community. Our jails are the biggest housing unit for people with mental health challenges. Now, there are a lot of, a lot of things needed in the community. I know this is maybe a county commissioner's thing, but I also wanted to task y'all with this also, if you would. Whenever an issue comes up that deals with the mental health portion of the community, the substance abuse portion of the community, or the, and ADD, the developmentally development segment of the population, listen to it with, with open ears, see if you can help us make a difference in the lives of the people that, that are affected on a daily basis with issues like that. And that's all I wanted to say. Again, thank you to the staff. You have my permission, if it's needed, to come in late tomorrow. But thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is any other member of the public would like to speak? Thank you. Turn it back over to staff for their consideration, I mean, to the board for their consideration. Sorry.
I don't have any more further comments, I saw.
No, I was about to say, it was board, I meant board.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to recommend for adoption the codified Clayton Unified Development Ordinance as presented with the listed changes since 9/11/2023.
We have a motion.
I second.
We have a motion by Board Member Applewhite to recommend codified Clayton Unified Development Ordinance with the, and do we have a, do we have a second by Board Member Williams?
Yes, you do, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in polls, say no. Motion passes. Motion passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a formal discussion, any formal discussion. I'll take, entertain a motion to adjourn.
One, one quick point.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute.
Board Member Applewhite. To the, to the members of the public that were concerned about, there was a gentleman earlier who had mentioned about the folks with disabilities having access at the communities that they live in, and then the gentleman who just spoke about folks with mental illness that are struggling with that, with those challenges. I do think in any opportunity, this board has the opportunity to help in any way and recommend changes to developments to help those folks. I think that would be warranted.
I concur, I concur. Thank you. Any other board member on the formal discussion, comment? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Board Member Williams to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Liskam. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we adjourn. Hey, guys.